I would like to ask everyone to please turn off and silence yourself electronic devices. Thank you. Tonight's presentation of the colors will be held by the award-winning Spring Navy JROTC. Commanding the color guard and carrying the United States flag is Cadet Chief Terrence McAllen. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Petty Officer First Class Jericho Whitner. The United States Rifle Guard Cadet Petty Officer First Class Noah O'Neal. The Texas Rifle Guard is Cadet Chief Petty Officer Luis Salinas. Leading the pledges tonight is Cadet Petty Officer First Class Caleb Ward. The Spring Navy JORTC program is under the direction of Master Chief Mark Clark, Senior Chief Arthur Felix, and Chief Martin Horner and Chief Brian Telet. At this time, will everyone please stand? At this time, I'll ask that everyone can still remain standing for a quiet moment of silence in your own way. Thank you. You may be seated. Our first order of business tonight is a review of the minutes from our previous meeting. Do any trustees have any changes or corrections? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that the board approve the minutes from January 6, 2022 Boardwork Session, January 11, 2022 Regular Meeting, the January 14 Special Call Session, and the January 28 Special Call Session.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the January 6, 2022 Boardwork Session, the January 11, 2022 Regular Meeting, the January 14, 2022 Special Call Session, and the January 28, 2022 Special Call Session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Adams to approve the minutes from the January 6 Boardwork Session, the January 11 Regular Meeting, the January 14 and 28 Special Call Session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Our next item is the Superintendent's Remarks. And this time, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lepita Hena-Hosha.
Thank you, Ms. Durant and Board members, everyone in the audience. I am totally excited, thrilled, and humbled to be here to serve as the first Hispanic female superintendent in Spring ISD in its 87 years of history. I first want to thank our board, which they have proven to be extremely supportive and most importantly, inclusive of our very diverse district here in Spring ISD. Our board working tirelessly every day to ensure that we have excellent equitable outcomes for all students. And so extremely grateful for their support and their leadership. So my first eight days, but who's counting, right? So eight days have been filled with lots of hope. Lots of hope and possibilities of what our district can achieve. And really want to focus on maximizing the future of our district. And so as the Superintendent of Schools for Spring ISD, my goal is to create a new era for Spring ISD. This new era will be guided by three pillars, what I'd like to call pillars, anchored in our strategic plan, one that our board spent a lot of time developing. So what I'd like to say is the what we are doing is not changing, but the how we do our work is what I'd like to focus on. I want to ensure that one of our pillars, the foundation, is focused in joy. Joy in learning, joy in leading, joy in coming to school every single day. Joy in being that teacher that illuminates a child's life. I want to ensure that we also reconnect and reengage with Spring ISD. These last two years have been difficult. So many of us have experienced so many challenges. And unfortunately, we have grown fractured. And so I invite all of our community, all of our students, our parents, our teachers, to reconnect with us, to reengage in Spring ISD, to ensure that you're connected with us. And finally, I want to focus on empowerment. And that's one thing that if you've been listening to our board, they're very focused on hearing the voices, the voices of our students, the voices of our parents, and the voices of our community. And so focusing on empowerment, that everyone has a voice at the table, and especially a voice here in Spring ISD. So I say to the board, to the community that's here with us tonight, and those that are watching, that as the superintendent and as the cabinet that's here, the executive leadership team for Spring ISD, we are committed and ready to engage in the work. And so just some quick highlights. As part of the re-engaging and the reconnecting for the district, I think you might have seen the work that our communications department has done. We have an amazing talented team of people and really taking on the work of how do we engage our community, making all these videos a way that our community can re-engage with us. And so hopefully, you're able to watch some of those videos, but again, thinking of a way that we can get closer, that we can become one district. The other piece that our communication team and our family and community engagement team have been working on, again, focusing on the connecting and reconnecting with the district is going out into our community. And so this past Sunday, myself, our board president, as well as all of our board members and cabinet members, we had the opportunity to visit Fallbrook Church, a cornerstone, an anchor here in the community. And with Pastor O and Pastor Pender, had the opportunity to address the community. And so just one way for us to go out. We're not going to sit and wait for the parents or the community to come to us. We are going out. So for the rest of the month, you'll see cabinet, you'll see our board visiting different churches, different organizations, because we want to make sure we hear your voices, we hear you. We are also aggressively working to secure coverage in all of the media outlets that are out there. And I'll tell you, our communications team has done an amazing job. I think every news station in English and Spanish and every social media has been able to carry this event out. And so as we get ready and move forward, I know many of you, and especially if there's any students at home, last weekend or last Friday, you had a day to stay at home, right? It was an ice day. And so being the superintendent on the, what, second or third day, having to cancel school? I was like, oh, my goodness. So I called Ms. Durant, I called all the board, checked with Chief Colberth, our Chief of Police, and all of cabinet, and saying, we're not to cancel classes. And of course, it was a day to be able to stay home and be safe. And I'm happy to report that our buildings did not receive any damage. We were good, and all of us were able to come back to our schools in a very safe environment. And so another piece that is happening right now as we speak and is part of the vision of the board, I'll never forget a couple of months ago, having the question from Ms. McDaniels, one of our board members, when she asked, are we translating our board meetings into Spanish? If we have 49% of our student population that are Latinos, that are of Hispanic origin, if we have over 10% of our, a third of our Hispanics that are limited English proficient or bilingual emergent students, if we want those families to get engaged and come and meet the board, are we translating this in Spanish? And when Ms. McDaniels made that comment, I became very quiet and very reflective, because for seven years, we hadn't done that, or for the history of Spring ISD, we had not done that. And so she gave us the challenge, gave the challenge to cabinet, Mr. Gretsch, our Chief of Communication and his entire team. And so I'm happy to say that tonight, for the first time, our board meeting is being simultaneously translated into Spanish. And so for our community, that's the commitment of the board. That's the commitment of the board that says we are a very inclusive community. We're very diverse, where we honor all race, all ethnicities, and we want you to be involved. We want that Spanish-speaking community that hasn't come to the board meetings or hasn't had a place at the table to be involved. And so I thank the board for their leadership, Ms. McDaniels. I thank you for your challenge and for moving us forward. So thank you very much, Ms. Durant. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hena-Hosha. Next, I'd like to invite any other trustees to make any comments or remarks.
Well, Dr. Hena-Hosha, I'm piggybacking off of you a little bit about equity and inclusion. I had an opportunity along with a couple of other board members to attend an equity symposium, a national equity symposium, an advocacy symposium. It was very enlightening to see what other states and districts around the country are doing and how important it is for us to include equity in everything we do. And so I will continue to support you and that path that we take, because it is very important for our district to look at all areas and be equitable in everything that we do. Thank you.
I'll chime in and add on. I was also at the Equity Symposium and Advocacy Institute. And I think it's important to note that when we talk about equity, in our current climate in this country, everybody seems to think that that's about race. And a telling thing about this institute that we attended this past weekend was that the primary lobbying goal was to get adequate funding for IDEA. Since IDEA was passed into law in the 70s, it has never been fully funded. It's been an unfunded mandate. They promised to fund it at 40% and have been stuck at like 15% for decades. And so a lot of what we were doing was getting around, we had a conversation with the education staffer for Senator John Cornyn, to push them to go ahead and fully fund their unfunded mandate. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that's the work that's being done. And if you're interested in getting involved and pushing your members of Congress and members of the Senate to do something to help public education, that is, that's a phone call that's worth making.
Thank you. We also attended this week a session where we worked with other districts in the region, in Region 4, to identify our top key legislative priorities. And I'm really excited that we were able to narrow it down to eight that we want to push forward in this upcoming legislation. And I really want to encourage the community to engage, partner with the district and the board as we continue to drive forward legislation that impacts our students and what we do every day. Trustee Adams just mentioned an unfunded mandate. You know, they continue to put opportunities on school districts where we're challenged to meet them. And if we don't let our voices be heard as one, then we can't continue to drive forward and be successful in what we do. We've got to come together as a family to advocate for our kids. And I'm really excited about the first steps that we've taken, and I'm looking forward for us to continue to drive that forward. And I'm looking forward to engagement and partnership with the community. Also really excited about Dr. Hena-Hosha. You know, there's an old saying that where it says, nothing changes if nothing changes. And I know that we are going to have some great changes. We still, our mission and our vision is the same. And it's about educating our children and keeping them safe. And that's what's our key priority here. That's what it's all about. And if we continue to focus on that and continue to drive in the direction, I think the sky will be the limit. And with that, if anyone else has any more comments, I'm going to go ahead and continue with tonight's agenda. And thank you, everyone, for your remarks. Our next item is our spotlight, which is one of my favorite parts of the meeting, where we get to celebrate our successes. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Workforce Development, Dr. Matthew Parison.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board, Dr. Hena-Hosha and cabinet. It is exciting to be with you tonight and share with you the work that our students and staff have been doing this month. As you know, it's Black History Month. And across the district, our librarians, our teachers, our administrators have been organizing events. They've been decorating. They develop instructional activities to celebrate Black History. Each year, our students also develop projects in which they engage in writing, art, as well as oratory skills through a competition that we have as our district-wide Black History Expo. Our theme this year is a celebration of people of African descent. This year's projects provide an opportunity to spotlight talented students, and they share what they've learned in the expo. And so we're excited to share the phenomenal accomplishments of our students and what they've learned about the generations that have been impacted by the culture and the history of people of African descent. Tonight, we have a preview of some of that great learning that occurred as our students developed their competition entries. So what we will introduce are three different students from elementary. Our student from middle school was not able to be with us tonight. And then our student from high school, who worked, there were actually two students who worked as a partner pair. So we're excited to share their entries. They were some of the four entries, the top three from each of the campuses that came forward, and they'll compete at the district event. So our first student that's going to come up and share their work is from Isabella Sandoval. She's a grade four student at Anderson Elementary School. And she's going to share a little bit about her project and what she learned.
Hello and good evening. What I learned about Frederick Douglass is that he had escaped slavery and then became a public speaker. For his work, he went around saying speeches to everybody. That gave everybody hope that they would one day be free. He also taught other African-Americans that escaped slavery, like him, to read and write. He taught them how to read the New Testament of the Bible. Then, in 1838, he met his wife Anna Hitt. And in 1863, he met Abraham Lincoln. I chose to make my project about Frederick Douglass because when I was looking for an African-American for my project, I saw Frederick's photo with one of his speeches that said, "Knowledge does not make you a slave." I also knew that other people might choose Martin Luther King or Rosa Parks. So I wanted to choose someone different. I chose to make a puppet show because I thought that if kids saw it, they would find it entertaining and learn something about it. I also always liked to make puppet shows when I was little. To make my puppets, I got brown and beige colored socks. I gathered some materials like cardboard and scissors to make the puppets. For example, to make Abraham Lincoln, I got some materials to make his jacket and his bow. To make his hat, I cut out some pieces of cardboard. And then we got some black felt to put it on top. The puppets I made were Frederick Douglass, a random bald person, Anna Hitt, and Abraham Lincoln. Thank you.
And our middle school person did arrive, so we're very excited. Nia Gatlin is a grade six student from Spring Woods Village.
Hello, I am Nia Gatlin. Hope everybody's enjoying their evening. I chose to do my project about Maya Angelou because she is one of my favorite inspiring poets. I feel like that she is a very amazing woman, and I wish she was here today, but due to her passing. I chose Maya Angelou. I did my project on Maya Angelou because, well, I love her in poetry. One of my favorite poets, "A Phenomenal Woman" by Maya Angelou. And I felt like she's a very, very, very beautiful and very intelligent woman. She did have a rough childhood when she was younger due to her parents divorcing and her being quiet as a kid. And she never really came out of her shell till she decided, well, till she had to go live with her grandmother. That's when she decided to go to college, go to high school, try to move on with her life, trying to go to college, do amazing things. And around 2000 something, she made a beautiful speech about civil rights and how everyone should be equal in their own way. And I think she is a very important part of Black History Month.
Our high school representative is from Westfield High School. And we have two students that worked on the project together. They're both 12th grade. And we have Megan Ellie and Mariana Torres.
Good evening to the board members, all of you. Our project was over Aaron McGruder and his mark on African-American culture. Aaron McGruder was a cartoonist who made the Boondocks, a nostalgic staple in our culture. Aaron McGruder graduated from the University of Maryland and started on a newspaper, but soon grew out to the Boondocks and pitched it to Adult Swim. The Boondocks is a staple in the culture and a shining light on the positives and negatives of our culture in the first place, whether it be bad or good. And it encouraged people to think about the status quo of our society and our community in the first place. Do the main characters Riley Freeman, Huey Freeman, and Robert Japadaire Freeman. And even though it can be seen as an edgy cartoon with grotesque humor, it does shine a light on a lot of things going on with our culture. And it still stretches today, even though it may seem more grotesque nowadays and with this humor and jokes.
I'd like to say that it was really, it was really great to work with her when it comes to Megan's project. I don't think I would have done it without her, because if you can see, all the artistic talent was.
She carried.
Okay, but you carried it. I mean, it looks great. And I think we make a really good team. And we settled on the idea of making a project about him because she and I are very artistically talented, and we wanted to find a common ground.
And I particularly want to be, wanted to become an animator at some point to make a cartoon with a cultural impact such as Aaron McGruder's, even though it may be some fantasy cartoon.
We would also like to recognize our parents for all the support that they've given, providing as the students work on the project. So if their parents could stand as well, please.
We can have them come forward and take a picture with us before they get away.
Yes, absolutely. And we also have several of their teachers here today. So if you're one of our students' teachers, if you could please stand. As you can see, our students have engaged in some phenomenal learning. And we look forward to sharing all of the different exhibits that will be displayed on February 17 from 5:30. from five thirty to seven at Decane High School for the full exhibition. And I do want to recognize also Sam Abadark. He is in the back. Every year, he spends months organizing and really helping to make sure it's a great success. So, I didn't want to go without recognizing him. So, thank you. We do have our students up in case you had any comments or questions for them.
I will say that I appreciate the effort to not just do Martin Luther King. I'm especially, I really appreciate Erin McGruder because we talk about Black History and we refer back to, you know, African-Americans like Frederick Douglass that were, you know, more than a hundred years in the past. It is interesting that we have Maya Angelou and Erin McGruder. Black History is happening right now, just as Mexican-American history is happening right now. And so, I really appreciate your efforts to have a diverse group of African-American historical figures. Thank you for that.
All right, if we can get a picture, that would be great. Yeah. We can say, you have them more comfortable here. Okay, and they'll get in front of us? Come get some photos. We know her.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We are so proud of your work. And people say we don't get paid for what we do. That's worth more than any monetary reward. Thank you. For our next spotlight, I'd like to recognize our executive director of Instructional Services, Maria Mendoza.
During that expo, we had every campus represented. Four hundred and sixty-nine students submitted writing entries. Four hundred and sixty-nine students were recognized for their writing that's on the rise. We held a medal, a medal ceremony in which one hundred and eighteen students received medals for their commendation in their writing. The first writing award was named after one of our very own students who is currently at Spring High School, the Walker Award. Our high school student received the Tatum Award. This evening, we have two students who are here to read their original work for you. Our first student is our middle school student.
Hello, my name is Ziffy Clark and I attend Bailey Middle School. I'm a Spring guys, the uprising writer. And the title of my poem is, "I'm a Champion." I wonder if I will ever accomplish my dreams. I hear my mom hear her shout from the crowd when I'm in a game. I see the touchdown getting closer. I want to make my mom proud. I am a champion. I pretend that I'll be a famous football player. I feel sad when I make mistakes, but I learn from them. I touch my shoulder before I start a play. I worry if I won't accomplish my dreams. I cry when I mess up. I'm a champion. I understand that it will be challenging to accomplish my dreams. I say I'll do better every time I mess up. I dream, I dream to make my mom happy. I try to realize that not everyone accomplished their dreams. I hope to become a famous football player. I am a champion.
Our second student this evening is a student at Carl Winche High School, Sarah Salinas.
Um, hi. My name is Sarah Salinas. I attend Carl Winche Senior High School. I'm in ninth grade and I have written a poem that is called "The Girl With A Blank Expression." Living, breathing, she wants the bleeding. She wants the burning on her legs. She's hanging on by a thread, a thread of misery. Her sadness will always be a mystery to her and herself. Living, breathing, if only she was dreaming, but she's not. And no one seems to realize how much she's fought. Fought the demons in her head, barely even able to get out of bed. No motivation and she's fallen into these poor temptations. She leaves these clues and looks to people and says, "If only you knew." If only you knew the pain she's endured these past few months, that the only way that she could handle it was by putting up a front. If only you knew how they touched her, how she is now and what has occurred. If only you knew she wants to hurt her body again, let the blood flow back down the drain, let the world cave in. If only you knew the cries she's cried at night, longing for someone to show her a light. If only you knew how they said she's a liar. If only you knew how she's not claimed to survive as a survivor. If only you knew how she's barely hanging on. If only you knew how she's still waiting for a response, waiting for the day she's free, waiting for the time she's able to live carefree, but you still don't comprehend what's going on inside her head. You're a bystander, you don't see her calls for help. You said if you knew, you wouldn't hesitate to help her yourself. You don't know, but once she's gone, you'll think about all the times she didn't respond, the time she said she hasn't moved on about what happened months and years ago, even though people have told her she needed to let go. Once you realize everything she said was true, you'll think to yourself and say, "If only you knew." No one asks for the reasons why this young girl hurt herself. They tend to assume that she was possibly compelled, compelled by the voices in her head, wandering free and making her feel like she should be dead. You're crazy, you're lazy, you're being selfless. Maybe you should stop being selfish. Others think they know what's best for you. And sadly, you're helpless and there's nothing you can do. They never ask how you feel. They never ask what you want to do to heal. They never try to help with the mental exhaustion. They look at you and think caution. But what actually happens in the small hospital that's supposed to help you? What actually happens when your attempt didn't go through the way you wanted it to? What actually happens when you go into the darkened closed room because a temper tantrum wasn't the only thing you threw? What actually happens when they start you on medication because the aura you bring shows the future of committing an assassination? You feel dissociated from your own brain because God forbid you ever feel like yourself again? What actually happens in the clock, in the conference room where the clock pauses and won't resume? What actually happens when flashbacks occur, even though you specifically remember it was all a blur? The flashing lights flashing for all the world to see? The flashing lights reminding you of who you used to be? What actually happens when you're diagnosed with depression? When your whole future is based on two questions? Do you want to end your life? And if so, would you overdose or hurt yourself with a knife? What actually happens when people care? What actually happens when you think life isn't fair? Why do people judge what has been examined and why don't they ask what actually happened? She feels alone, scared she won't make it, scared that there's no possible way home. It's no one's business really. So, now people sit back and wonder, who is this girl with the blank expression? Her face shows the story of the Great Depression. Her body's slim with a few minor scars and she looks as if she's held behind bars. She only speaks when spoken to and her clothing is made out of the blue. Her story shows a deep past of when she wasn't happy, more like an outcast. The mistakes she's made are how she appears and all she longs for is to disappear. Her heart is repairing itself. She's trying to rely on oneself. You may have heard the rumors that have been made, the rumors that have, that show how she's now portrayed, but don't believe them, it will never define her outcome. As I look in the mirror, I see her looking back at me, someone I will forever be. I apologize to everyone I've hurt. The tears you've shed have now caused an alert. I was too caught up in my own pain to think every day repeated and I was never able to fully blink. In a blink of an eye, I could have been gone. Now, I just think of all the times I thought I never belonged, belonged in a world I so wished to leave, belonged in a world I never believed. Now, I'm left with the scars that remind me of a dark time. The time I committed a violent crime against me, myself, and I, a crime I thought wouldn't help me survive. I look back at all the times I shut you all out and made incisions on myself without a doubt. My body is filled with regret, scarred with the faces of people I'll never forget. As I've told my story, I hope some have changed. I hope that people realize what I all explained. Lastly, I feel as though you never really knew the real me, the type of person I am now and who I used to be. Here you are watching me in my now remorseful eyes and here I am ready to apologize. Thank you.
Dr. Hinaosa gave us a task, an assignment really, to make literacy a priority, a priority around equity. These are two samples of student writing. Each one of you should have received a binder full of all of the medalists from our district. In addition to that, each campus selected two ambassadors who stood at the table that evening. You probably have seen it all over Twitter. And those ambassadors were able to speak to the importance of writing and how writing helps us heal, helps us understand, helps, helps us believe in ourselves. We will continue our work in helping students see the connection between literacy achievement and their lives. And so, I thank you this evening. I also want to thank the parents of our students. If you would please stand up. And if you have any questions for two of our medalists, they're here for you.
Well, I'd like to tell you, you are our champion. And I'd also like to say to Sarah that I felt your poem in my spirit. You're phenomenal.
Thank you.
I am always really impressed with our artists. I, I feel like I say this every other board meeting. I get, I'm blown away by just the pure talent and it's still developing talent, which means three, four, five years from now, it'll be even more amazing. I want to encourage you both to keep doing what you're doing because the world needs you.
And I will just say this, Sarah is in the process of writing her book.
I'd like a copy. Done. I have a saying, let the pen be your friend. And it can be. Thank you. We'd like another photo? We'll be glad when this pandemic's behind us so we can get closer. Thank you, great job. Thank you. Good job. All right, we're going to move on to our next topic, our agenda item, which is public participation. Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
All right, and I want to thank everyone for allowing me to move that item up on the agenda. We're going to move it up moving forward. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before these items are considered by the board. So, Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone registered to speak for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. And moving right along, for our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief financial officer, Anne Westbrook.
Thank you. Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Hinaosa, and members of the board. We have with us this evening Ms. Yolanda Humphrey, who is a partner with Purdue Brandon. And she's going to come forward and give our report of delinquent taxes as of January. And so, if you all recall, in October of each year, the board adopts our tax rate and we start sending out our bills to our community members and we start heavy collections around January of every year. And on January thirty-first, your property taxes become delinquent if they're not paid at that time. And we begin to assess interest beyond January thirty-first because they're late at that point. And then, on July first of each year, any uncollected taxes that are still due to the district are then turned over to Purdue Brandon to begin the collection process. And so, Ms. Humphrey will give us an update of where we are as of now.
Thank you. Madam President, Dr. Hinaosa, congratulations and members of the board. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and present to you every year. We like the FaceTime and being able to explain to you what's going on. We also like to be able to compliment your tax office. They do a great job. They don't leave much for us to collect. But, so starting up. All right. As Ms. Westbrook told you, the most recent delinquent tax year comes to our office, those accounts come to our office on July one. And so, once they come over, they start out this, this first chart that I have, it's a donut and it shows the account breakdown. So, it shows where each of those accounts that are on your delinquent tax roll, it shows the percentage of where they are, the status. So, when they're first turned over to us, they start out in the action pending. And so, that's where we're making phone calls, we're sending letters, we're trying to reach out to taxpayers so that we can get them to, you know, pay it in full. If not paying it in full, then to set up a payment arrangement. And then, we monitor those payments. If they're not able to set up a payment arrangement, if we're not able to reach them or if they set up a payment arrangement and they end up defaulting, then that's when it would move to litigation. And so, this art section of the donut chart, it shows where we file the suit. There may be suits pending, we may have a judgment, we may be waiting to post the property for sale. So, that's what that section is. And then, you also see that you have about twenty percent of your delinquent tax roll, there's deferrals. So, you have a lot of residents in your district that what it means is if they're over sixty-five or if they have a disability, they're eligible to have their taxes deferred as long as the property is their homestead. And so, as long as they have the deferral, those are accounts that we can't touch. So, and then, you also have, it's a small slice, but the two percent is in trust and those, that, that is property where we've offered it for sale. There wasn't anyone that bid on the property, so it was struck off to the district. So, the district doesn't actually own the property. The district is holding it in trust for all the other jurisdictions that were in that judgment. Okay, and then, I also have the section that says in that address. This one is a, it's more of a dynamic status because what we're doing is we're, we, we basically work off of the appraisal roll, the tax roll as far as the addresses. But when we get them, sometimes they're bad address. So, we'll code them bad address. We're doing research to try to clean up the addresses. When we get that information, we pass along to the tax office. And then, once we find a good address, then it's no longer in that section. So, on this next chart. So on this next chart, this is showing the dollar range. So it's breaking up accounts that are ten thousand dollars and above, or a thousand dollars and above. What percentage of the delinquent tax roll fits that category? On the ten thousand above, those are are going to be your accounts that have deferrals, because they may have been deferred for a significant period of time. And so the penalty and interest plus the taxes that continue to come due are in that that amount also. Then you also have bankruptcies, those are sometimes high dollars as well. This next chart is is showing you tax years. So the largest section of the chart you see is for twenty twenty. That tax year was turned over to us July one of twenty twenty-one. And so of course, since we've just gotten it, that's going to be the one that has most money due for that particular tax year. And then the next larger section is the two thousand thirteen and prior, and it's larger because they're all combined. Those, um, the accounts that are in that section are primarily business personal property. Where the property, by the time we got it, a lot of times these businesses, well, you live live and work in the community, so you know, there's a lot, especially on nineteen sixty businesses that have closed up. And so, under the tax code, it has to be delinquent for ten years before it's removed from the roll. So these are just waiting to be written off. And so it's hard to collect on the business accounts, because so the, so say for instance, for twenty twenty-one, we're not going to get that account until July of twenty twenty-two. So they've received their bill for October. It goes delinquent February one. They don't hear from us until July one. I mean, they're basically, you know, have a a whole year, and unfortunately, a lot of businesses, especially right now at this time, they're just not able to stay open. So we have a lot of those. So these next few charts, they're historical charts, and it's showing the percentage of collections that we have year by year. So one full year is July one of that delinquent tax year to the following June. So you'll see that as the years progress, the amount increases of what we've collected. And as I've said before, your tax office does a great job of collecting most of your taxes. Then we hit it, try to collect as much as we can. And then the rest of this is, you know, the accounts that are harder to collect. So here's the two thousand eighteen. And again, you'll see our goal is to at least have seventy percent by the end of the first year. So you see there. And then showing for twenty twenty, this this tax year was turned over to us July one of twenty twenty-one. And it's so far, we've had it six months, and we're, we've been able to collect almost sixty percent of what was turned over. So, we're on track. Are there any questions? I know there are some newer trustees that I don't think I've presented to before.
Yeah, I had a question on that.
Okay.
On the account breakdown chart, where it has the breakdown of the the two point five in litigation.
Yes.
Is that, I know that this is the dollar value, but is is this a handful of larger accounts? Or is that total, is that just a bunch of small accounts kind of all put together?
Okay, I'm sorry, I had to look at this because I'm here, the menu is covering up. Okay, so you're looking at litigation. There's forty percent there, and then repeat your question?
So for those accounts that are in litigation, is this just a handful of of accounts? Or is this a a number of smaller accounts that make up that total two point?
So it's the whole range? It's a range of the accounts?
Ms. Humphries, I'm wondering if state tax policy sort of impacts the amount that goes to collections. So we, uh, the the legislature, uh, did tax relief for property owners in the state of Texas last, last session. When do we see whether that makes a difference in terms of folks that can't pay their tax bills?
You know, we we normally collect about fifty percent by this time, when the year is turned over. Right now, we're at sixty percent. I'm not sure if some of those re- uh, relief programs had anything to do with why there was, you know, a rise, but there was, we were surprised, because we were expecting it to be less. Um, but other than that, I don't know what the difference could have been.
And I mean, it seems like between the pand- like, I would expect the pandemic to pull one way. And the legislature's tax policy to be pulling the other way. And so I was just curious as to how effective what they're doing in the legislature actually is.
And just one point of note, as far as the ability to pay, is there's tax compression, which means the tax rates are going down as the property values are going up. But as a homeowner, that doesn't necessarily mean that your tax bill is less than it was the year before. Because as the values gone up, even though you're taxing them at a lower rate, their bill could still be fairly consistent. So of course, the more we compress, and eventually, they may see an an improvement. But as of right now, the values are going up so fast and the rates going down, that they may not actually see much relief. Also recall that there is a proposal for an increase in the homestead exemption to go from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand. Now, that may actually make an impact on their bill that they'll see, which may make it a little bit easier to make those payments.
Any other questions? Thank you again for having me.
Thank you.
Nice seeing all of the faces, masks included. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
I did want to make a quick note that our tax assessor collector, Mr. Setneely's in the audience as well. So I just wanted to make sure I let you know she was here too, in case you didn't know her.
All right. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Uh, our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Schools, Dr. Michael Perez.
Good evening, President Durant and members of the board. Tonight, uh, Dr. Jennifer Cobb will be providing a presentation on the T A P R. The T A P R stands for the Texas Academic Performance Report. And based on the Texas Education Code, Section thirty-nine point three zero six, it specifies that the district must publish an annual report of its educational performance based on what's received by the Texas Education Agency. Additionally, a hearing for public discussion of this report must be held before the public, and the hearing will be held this afternoon. The Texas Academic Report provides a lot of information, all the way from student achievements, staff, and student information, including program information as well. And as soon as Dr. Jennifer Cobb, which she's our Assistant Superintendent for Research Accountability and Assessment, she'll be providing the report based on last year's accountability data.
And before we get started, I'd like to ask Dr. Hinoza if she'd like to make some comments on some changes we've made and how this data is going to be presented this evening. Thank you, Mr. Durant. And for our board members, I know you have your copies and you may have been studying them. One of the pieces that we did, as you know, this is an annual report, very lengthy, very rich in data. And so working with, uh, Dr. Cobb and, um, Ms. Kendall.
Dr. McCarley.
Dr. McCarley. Really thinking through this data, so that it, number one, that we could internalize it and really understand. You'll see that we've done some new visual, data visualization. As you go through, you'll also see that we've included headlines. And these headlines help us draw attention to what are those trends, what are those pieces that we are seeing in the data? And last but not least, as we go through this data, it reflects the discussion we had previously, where we are looking at our students, not necessarily by race, race and ethnicity, but instead by the students as they are identified as low socioeconomics. And so as as Ms. Dr. Cobb walks us through it, please feel free to ask questions. She is, you know, we've talked about this, taking it slow so we can internalize it. So ask her those questions, think through that piece of the data. And then behind this packet of the presentation, Dr. Carly actually provided the raw data. So this is something that you can spend some time afterwards. Or if you've already reviewed it and you have some questions for Dr. Cobb, we're willing to walk through it to really internalize it and understand where our district was last year. And what are the implications for us moving forward? Dr. Cobb?
Thank you, President Durant, Board of Trustees, Dr. Hinoza, it's a pleasure to speak to you tonight. Um, as Dr. Perez has already, um, kind of given you the preview of what, uh, taper is, or the Texas Academic Performance Report. Uh, this will be report that is provided by the Texas Education Agency, it's at the level of the state district and school level. And the just data is disaggregated by ethnicity, economically disadvantaged status, English language learners, and special education status. Uh, tonight, we will be having a public hearing, and we'll be just having one presentation of this. Unlike other years where we have it at the board workshop, and then the public hearing on the, on the following Tuesday. Um, and this is, the public hearing is in regards to the Texas Education Code, Chapter thirty-nine. Uh, the data was released on December third, and we are required to present within ninety days of release, which is why we are here today. So we're first going to start off with our enrollment. Um, as you can see, the layout, and for those of you who have seen this presentation before, the layout's a little different this year. Um, we have, um, uh, th- this is the enrollment trends that we have for the past three years, and the headlines that Dr. Hinoza was speaking to are on the top part. So as an example, over the last three years, the percentage of economically disadvantaged students in spring ISD has increased. In twenty twenty, twenty-one, seven out of eight students in spring ISD qualified for free and reduced lunch. Um, one part I want to make sure that we emphasize is that you will see that at different points of the of the report, we'll have different years worth of data. Sometimes it's just last year, twenty twenty-one. And other elements, it's a year behind, and other elements after that, it's two years behind. But I'll make sure to make note of that as we go along. So with this data, you can see in twenty twenty-one that our, um, population was eighty-seven percent economically disadvantaged. Uh, that's after, you can see nineteen twenty, we did a lot of updating to our, um, enrollment process and ensuring that, um, campuses were filling out their free and reduced lunch, lunch. So really, that difference you see between the seventy percent to the eighty-seven percent is more is partially, you know, changing demographic, but more so better records, um, more more, um, updated records. And, um, the, um, official snapshot of data has already come in this year, so we are at eighty-four percent. So we're going to continue that trend of being in the, um, in the eighties for economically disadvantaged status. Our English language learners have increased by three percent over the past three years. Special education increased by one. And then you see our race and ethnicity breakdowns in the blue bars, where our Hispanic population has grown three percent. Our black population has decreased by one. And then essentially, the other, um, smaller populations have remained relatively the same. Next, we are looking at the ethnic composition again, but, and by the, um, special populations. But we're also, we're comparing it now instead of over three years. And you'll see this pattern throughout the PowerPoint or the presentation. You will see a comparison between the re- spring ISD, the region and the state. As you can see, for us, our economically disadvantaged population is much larger than the region and the state. A saying that we kind of have in the district is that as our economically disadvantaged students go, so does the district. As this encompasses a great percentage of our students. Our English learners are four percent higher than the region and, um, seven percent higher than the state. And then among special education, it's relatively the same. With Hispanic population being, um, forty-nine percent compared to fifty-two and fifty-three. African American is, um, two times larger than the region four and three times larger than the state with, uh, our white population being smaller than the region and the state. So this is a new data visualization for us. Um, this is a comparison of our students versus our teachers. And it, um, the point of the the graphic is to kind of give visual representation of the difference between, um, our students who are on the left and our teachers that are on the right. As you can see, our Hispanic student population is forty-nine percent, and our Hispanic teachers are twenty-two percent. Which then lends to the headline that Hispanic teachers are underrepresented. When you look at the white population, they are overrepresented, where our students are, white students are six percent. And our white teachers are thirty-one percent. So now that we've talked a little bit about the demographics of our po- of our population, we're going to start getting into the STAR data. And there's a lot of slides, so, um, please ask questions as we go. Um, the labels.
I have a question.
Certainly.
Think I have two. So the, uh, T E A producers, the tapers, they don't have a, a category for high mobility, do they?
No, so, no, it's mainly in the accountability, well, there's a mobility number, so just the percent of mobility for the whole campus. It's not broken down by any subpopulation. We do have in the accountability system, which doesn't necessarily, I think it's a a part of the electronic taper part. But really, it's in the accountability reports. You have, um, enrolled, um, and non- continuously enrolled and non-continuously enrolled. And that's essentially the capturing of the mobility that occurs. But within taper, it's only that one, um, indicator, which is just an overall percentage of mobility.
We know what our, do you, do you know right now what our percentage of mobility is?
Um, I can, I I
If you don't know it off the top of your head.
Yeah, I I I would be speaking off the cuff. It's usually in the thirties, thereabout. But I I, and it fluctuates. I do know we have campuses that have as high in the forties. And then campuses that, especially those that are, um, like a Winchey or Roberson, it's it's fairly low. Because, you know, that's a a school of choice and and students are are tending, are tending to be less mobile there. But it it does have a wide variance as well. Okay.
I'm going to save my other questions.
Ask as you will. Okay. So now we're going to get into the STAR performance. So, um, these are the levels of, um, that you can reach within STAR, STAR three through eight and STAR E S D, which stands for End of Course, which are the exams that are taken, for the most part in high school, with a couple of students taking Algebra one, not a couple, a smaller number of students taking Algebra one in eighth grade. So you have the approaches grade level, and these are, these are definitions straight from the Texas Education Agency. There are students likely to, approaches is students likely to succeed in the next grade course with targeted academic intervention meets grade level. Is students that have a high likelihood of success in the next course, greater course, but may need short-term targeted academic intervention. Masters being students expected to succeed in the next grade or course with little to no academic intervention. So approaches being the the lowest threshold of passing, and then masters being the highest level. So this, um, is also kind of a new, um, graphic that we've provided this year. It's really, and this is participation by accountability subset. These past couple of years have been incredibly interesting for testing. Uh, those of us in the testing world are are having to, um, go through many challenges. But what you'll see here, and we want to make sure that we're, um, that we are cognizant of. In nineteen twenty, because of the COVID closure, there was no STAR. There was not an administration at all. In twenty twenty-one, we did have STAR, but they were considered optional. So your participation rate, as ours went down from ninety-one percent in eighteen nineteen to seventy-seven percent in twenty twenty-one. The same happened for the region and the state. So as we are looking at the data for twenty twenty-one, be cognizant of that that is seventy-seven percent of our kids participating in the exam. And that can influence sometimes how we do. So this is our first line graph of the night. There are plenty of them, if you've previewed the PowerPoint. So this is STAR three through eight and STAR E S D, reading. So the subject that we're looking at this time is reading at the purchase grade level or higher. From eighteen nineteen to twenty twenty-one, students across spring ISD, Region Four in Texas saw decreased performance on the STAR three saw decreased performance on the STAR 3 through 8 and STAR ESD reading test. So you'll see that the way that this is laid out is that our 1819 performance by our all students in race and ethnicity subpopulations are reported and then how they performed in 2021 compared to the district, the region, and the state. Same look at the data, but now instead of reading, we are now looking at mathematics. For mathematics, it's tested, and I should have said this for reading, it's grades 3 through 8. And then math, there's Algebra I. The reading also had English I and English II included. For Spring ISD, we saw a double-digit decrease on the STAR and STAR ESD math exams. Similar declines were seen in the region and the state. Our next subject, same look is writing. It should be noted that writing for this year occurred in grades 4 and 7. For this next year, this current year, I should say, we will not be having the writing exam anymore. The writing elements are being incorporated into the reading 3 through 8 exam. And so that's, TEA has been previewing that for us, but that will change the dynamics and the results of the reading exam.
Just have, have we identified any key indicators that would quantify the decreases that we're seeing?
In writing or in general?
In all, in general.
Yes, so I, there's, that is a very, that's a dissertation, yes. I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a concise answer. I can tell you definitely in mathematics, one of the struggles there is that oftentimes, especially as you get to the upper level math, if you're thinking about back when this, when we had virtual, we had a good percentage of our kids in virtual instruction. And so the greatest support mechanism is their family. In the lower grades, it tends to be easier, and the higher grades, that gets much harder. What we're seeing statewide, nationwide, is the COVID in general, is that a child that was struggling before is struggling more. That's just what, so the problems that we've had before, any difficulties that we've had in a population have just been amplified by this, by this COVID closure. Especially, so it should be not just glossed over that last year was not a conflict. It's almost like it's, oh, that was a while ago, but that was just last year that we had students in virtual instruction. And so that is impacting greatly. So that's why when you see all the data, we are matching, we may be below the state and the region, but our patterns are matching because it's impacting everybody.
Everybody, we see decreases with everybody, but at the state and the regional level, we're seeing 3, 2, 3, 5%, we're looking at 7, 8, and 10. Yes, so it's impacting us a little more.
It's a dissertation, because if you were to speculate the difference between our remote, the percentages of kids that were remote in spring, and then compare that to the region and to the state, I think you'd see that we did a really good job of getting one-to-one and had kids in remote longer than other school districts. And I think we may be paying a cost for that success at this point. But like, that's a very surface-level analysis of, as you said, something that's probably got lots of factors impacting it.
Right, and in the research, educational research world, we are going to see this for years. As, not just as a district, in the region, the state, that the impact of this, and it's really kind of unknown because we haven't had a pandemic in such a, you know, last time it happened was 1919. Well, we didn't have everybody going to school in such a, you know, systemized way that we do now. And so dependent on the education to, you know, be successful.
So I thank you for asking that question, President Durant, because I couldn't quite eloquently put it that way. And I get the response and what Winford was saying as well. It is a very large response. But I'd like to take a step back a little bit further. We know that the pandemic affected a lot of different variables. But if you look at, for example, on the STAR, the reading levels, going back to 18 and 19, this was prior to the pandemic. Do we know any, do we have any data or information as to why our starting points were so low in comparison to the region and the state, even back then, prior to pandemics effects?
And so, this could add, just to reiterate, I think Dr. Cobb talked a little bit about it earlier. Our 1819 scores, unfortunately, as a district and as schools, we were compared, our comparing group was totally different because of our socioeconomic status. And so unfortunately, our status was much lower than the actual. And so you'll see our data was skewed in that way. Now, are we having challenges or Spring ISD having challenges academically? Of course, we are. But a lot of this had to do with our comparison group and where we were at. And then, so that was 1819. In 20, we didn't take the exam. But this past year, in 2021, think a little bit about what Mr. Adams is saying, is we did have a lot of children that took advantage of the remote learning. Especially at high school, they didn't come to school. And so by making the test optional, we only had 77% of our kiddos that actually came to test. And so many of the students were kept at home for fear of, you know, coming to a campus. And so many of our students that were remote, that may have had more success, did not come to school. And so that was a large number of our African American and Hispanic students that were kept home. When you only test 77%, it's not going to get you good numbers. And what Dr. Cobb is saying is exactly what's happening is there's going to be a lot of study, a lot of research on what's happened and what's the impact of this learning loss that we're seeing right here, right now? What's the impact in the years to come? But yes, unfortunately, the past three years, the 2019 data was not good for us. The 2020, we did not test. And then the 2021 was optional for the students. So this is, this is going to be our first year that we will have, you know, everyone here. But also, you know, COVID has been a huge challenge for us.
All right, so we are now looking at science. So as a reminder, for science, the grades that are tested are grades 5, 8, and then there's biology. Spring ISD had a lower performance in 1819 and 2021 than the region and the state. Performance declined for students at all areas, or for the district, the region, and the state. And then finally, we have social studies. And this is for grades 8, and then there's US history. We, again, we had over, lower performance overall than the region and the state on both exams. And the declines from 1819 to 2021 were similar across these three areas. So this is another look at STAR. This is still STAR data, but now we're looking at all subjects by race. So this is taking those five subjects, the reading, the math, the writing, social studies, and science, and putting it together and looking at the approaches grade level or higher by subpopulation. So from 1819 to 2021, the percentage of students in Spring ISD, the region, and the state who met the approaches grade level performance decreased on both the STAR and STAR ESD exams. So again, even as we are looking at all subjects together, you're seeing similar patterns in the data where everybody is declining. And now we're going to take a look at, this is again at the approaches level, all subjects together. But this is looking at all students economically disadvantaged, English learners, and special education. While English learners in Spring ISD had lower performance than the region and the state, their decline in performance from 1819 to 2021 was less pronounced in the district than the region and the state. So if you remember, meets, or I'm sorry, approaches was the lowest level of passing. We're now looking at the meets grade level, so it's a higher standard. So across all grade levels and subjects, Spring ISD had lower performance than the region and the state on STAR and STAR ESD at the meets level standards. Again, the decline from, of performance for both, for all three, for both, I'm sorry, for all three, the district, the region, and the state had similar declines. And now again, looking by subpopulation, you again see similar declines and performance across the three areas. Finally, looking at the highest standard of passing at the master's grade level. Black and Hispanic students in Spring ISD had lower rates of decline than their counterparts in the region and the state at the master's level between 2018, 19, and 2021. Looking at it by subpopulation, our English learners in Spring ISD had lower rates of decline than the region and the state at the master's level from 2018, 19 to 2021. So this is the last of the STAR slide. I just want to pause here before we go into different areas.
On page 15, I'm just curious, do we have, and I may have missed this, because I'm missing sometimes, do we have the percentage of the economically disadvantaged that are special ed?
So within the taper report, we do not. But in our other analysis, we absolutely, we do that cross, cross analysis, where we're looking at both at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's one of the, and that's a great point. It's a limitation of taper is that we're reporting with the report. It's not necessarily our analysis that would dig deeper and look at different angles.
And I heard you, but I didn't process your, you started out with the definition of economically disadvantaged. How are we defining that again?
Those are students who qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Right, okay.
Okay, so on page nine, looking at reading. We saw decreases. So one thing that we know is there's a correlation between students who are reading below grade level and students who score approaches on STAR reading. So how are we tracking reading level data? And then how are we ensuring that we target those students, especially K through 2, before we even get to STAR? Because we know if we have students that are reading below grade level, K1, 2, odds are when they get to STAR, we're going to see them at approaches. So just curious, what's our, what are our plans? Because we see the trends are clear here.
Right.
And so we just had that discussion just a little while ago. And as you all know, we do give a middle-of-the-year assessment. So the schools just finished their assessment this past Friday. And so we will be ready to bring the, what we call MAP and circle data in March. And followed or coupled with that is exactly what are the schools doing with that data? Because we do know, research shows if students are not reading at or above grade level by third grade, we're missing the mark with them. And so there is some promising data that's coming through right now, very preliminary. But in March, Dr. Cobb will present the MAP data. And then the school's office, Dr. Bettis and the assistant suits, will talk about what are the actions that are being taken? How are we monitoring those students that are reading below grade level? And then what are the interventions or the acceleration that we're working with them? So we'll have that for you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so we also have to, one other subject that we have, our test web M-class also from K to 2 in reading. So that data will also be available. And we'll present on that.
Thank you.
So you get to see me again in a month. Okay.
So I did, I want to circle back to my question again. And I just want to make sure I understand this. So I get that 2018 and 2019 was not comparable data for us, right? 2020, 2021, for Spring Region 4 and Texas, we can all agree that those are the current numbers, right? Current values. So if you gave us 10% more on our starting point in 2018 and 2019, then that means that our drop would have been much more precipitous in comparison to Region 4 in Texas. Is that right? And so I guess kind of back to my original question, do we know why we are dropping so much further? Because as it stands right now, our drops are kind of comparable to Region 4 and to Texas. But you're saying that 1819 is really not good data for us to begin with. So if we kind of bump it up to make it more realistically where it should have been, our drops are a lot farther down. So do, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Right, so a couple of things on that. So the one thing about 1819, yes, to Dr. Hinojosa's point, it actually, it wasn't a great representation of the economically disadvantaged status for certain, which in our accountability measures are, it's weaved throughout, it matters a lot that is accurate. So that's, that's one point. But we also were on a trajectory of growth in 1819. And we were seeing incremental gains, at least since I've been here, year over year over year. And then when COVID happened, then we were, you know, we have the impact that everybody has. So yes, were we lower than the region and state? I think that's kind of what you're alluding to in 1819, yes. However, the one reason that the drops are more severe is because of who our population is. Economically disadvantaged students are, have been more greatly impacted by COVID closures, unemployment. Trustee Adams was talking about mobility. Our mobility has increased a bit from that, the needs. You're aware of, you know, the kind of the plight and the situation of the district. It just exacerbates the problem. And so this is the first year that we have everybody in person. So that's, that's one great thing. Because in the virtual setting, although the, we were one-to-one, we had the opportunity to provide the instruction. We did provide the instruction, how it was received, what environment they were sitting in, how much they absorbed and were able to get from it, you know, varied based on their situation. And so now this feels, for us, it feels like a time and an opportunity. When we have our students back, we know we need to accelerate learning. We know we need to, we know we need to hyper-focus. And so now it's not a restart or reboot. Well, it is, but, but it's also knowing now, which is another thing that we were grappling with last year, not quite knowing exactly where we stood, because we were not getting all the data. And so our 2021 is also back to that 70%. Those are certain kids that didn't show up. And so that can be also reflected in the data. So I think to answer your point more succinctly, yes, in 1819. But what's missing here is the trajectory that we were going upward, that we now are recovering from because of COVID.
The other thing I'm sort of curious about, and this might not be the time for this discussion, but like last month, we had a conversation about student-based budgeting and the way we determine inputs. And so in 2018, 2019, the way we were budgeting and the way we were thinking about FDEs and how each campus got its funding is different from, I think, the way we're thinking about doing budgeting going forward. And when you look at like the really large percentage of our students that are economically disadvantaged, is there going to be a shift in the funding weights around that? And so this might not be a conversation for now, but I just want to put that out there for people to think about.
I'm glad you brought that up because I've been making those kind of notes. Because there are budget opportunities, you know, that can apply to this data that we really need to be thinking about.
Okay, so I am going to, we've covered these slides, but I'm just going back. We've covered these slides, but I'm just kind of going back to where we. Stopped in the presentation. So now we're transitioning over to A P and I B, which stands for. Advanced placement testing and I B is international baccalaureate results for all subjects participation and present of exam. Of examinee scoring three or higher. So. The data that we were seeing before was 2021. Now we're looking at 1920. This data lags a year. So kind of, so I almost want to say picture this. So in 1920. We close, we we closed in March, right? The A P testing occurs in May. So A P college board, we don't have I B yet. Our students are not taking the I B exam yet that as Springwood's village matriculates, we will have those results. But these are purely, even though it says I B as it does in taper, these are purely A P results. But in 1920, we had. College Board had to, who who provides the A P test, had to transition to online exams only. And the impact of that, it the participation rate, which are the bars on the top, did impact everybody. It did impact us more significantly for we went from 22% in 1819 to 17% in 1920. However, when you look at the the dots below, those are the percentage of students that scored a three or higher on the exam. The highest score that you can get is a five meeting criterion. Means you scored a three or higher. So in actuality, what happened here is our percentage of students really reaching a three or higher increase from 19%. To 25%. And for some reason, trustee Adams is burned in my brain that you asked, okay, what are the numbers behind that? That's actually an increase of three students more actually passed the exam behind it. And if I remember correctly, it's 186 to 189 from. 1819 to 1920. Looking at the S A T and A C T results percent tested. So Dr. Hino Hosa alluded to the big packet of data that you have with you. But that was also provided to you by Dr. MacCarley. This has the the numbers behind it. I mean, it would just be very difficult to read with this much data on one slide. But as you all know, we, you all have approved us to have S A T day, which occurs in March. And that is the one, that is the main reason why we have such high participation rates. Amongst all all students and all ethnicities backgrounds. And our exam, again, this is in 2019, 20. We gave the exam the first week in March and we closed, we never came back from spring break. So. In 1920, we were able to get those kids in before the pandemic start started next year. I will remind you that we will have been in the pan, we will be in the virtual setting in 2021. So those results will go down. But they are going back up again this year. Okay. Now we're looking at S A T and A C T results for E L A and writing. Spring ISD score scored lower on the S A T and English language exams. Then, sorry, score lower than students across Texas. However, scores in spring ISD are increasing. So to, as this is a new look, just to give you a a little information about the how to read it, the green dots on the top are Texas. And the blue dots are spring ISD. Now looking at mathematics. The average S A T mathematics scores for Hispanic and white students in spring ISD and across Texas have decreased since 1617. But for spring ISD, our Asian and our black students actually have improved. Going to a different set of data, we're now looking at advanced. Or A P courses, not just the test, but A P courses and dual credit course completion. So as you can see, with every year, we have increased and improved. With the offerings that we have, and there are just also working on this side of. Of increasing and expanding dual credit options. And C T E options, we are going, we are continuing to increase those availability. And we are working to increase the participation rates as well, so that we can. A match if not outpace the region and the state here in a couple of years. Next, we're going to look at graduation by type. So what we have here is we have an outgoing four by four. A diploma system that then was changed in how by House Bill five. So as you see, the the very small numbers for the minimum program and the. Recognize and distinguish program, those are old. Diplomas. So really, we are now in House Bill five. So we have the foundation, no endorsement, foundation endorsement. And foundation distinguished level of achievement, which is the highest level of diploma. And as you can see for us that we have increased the percentage of students. Reaching that distinguished level of achievement over the past three years. And again, this data lags one year. So this is the last reported year is 1920. Looking at the same. Diplomas. But now looking at it compared to the district, the region and the state. In this one, we do out, we are outpacing the region and the state. And the percentage of students reached reaching that highest level of diploma of the foundation distinguished level of achievement. Transitioning now to graduation rate. We're looking at our subpopulations economically disadvantaged Ls and special ed and then our race and ethnicities and our all students. So you can see over the past three years, our graduation rate. Has increased for economically disadvantaged students. And reading the the headline. They have increased for every student group with the exception of two subpopulations.
So. In 2018, we were undercounting. Economically disadvantaged students.
Yes.
And while we were undercounting, 86% of those undercounted students. Graduated on time. Is that, am I reading that correctly? And so now that in 2020 that we are no longer undercounting. We've, that's a double increase. I just want everybody to think about that. That's. More students being counted, it's more students being successful. So.
That is correct. And I should say, and I I can't read all of my notes, but the the enrollment size for American Indian. And for Pacific Islander, I only want to note that that's those are under 30, the the number of students behind that. Because you're going to see great fluctuations from your, from all the data that I'm going to show you upcoming. So. Just know that we're talking about where percentages are going up wildly and and back and forth. It's, we're talking about. 10 or 15 kids fluctuating.
I just wanted to ask, going off of trustee Adams noticing there, what would you attribute that to, the success to?
It's, it's several factors. It's the dropout prevention activities that are occurring. It's. Having more attention to the degree plans, ensuring that the students are, you know, on track to graduate. That you saw the distinguished level of achievement going up. That was a real, when we saw the drop, I'll go back to it. So you see that drop that happened in 1819 when we noticed that. We really realized that what was occurring is that was the counseling that was happening for students, not realizing that you need algebra two. That what that's the gatekeeper for D L A for the distinguished level of achievement. And so once that was a focus and attention was given to it, you know, we shot right back up again. Because that was really the difference there. So there's a lot of systems and structures that have occurred in the counseling department. And our student support services that are really. Purposefully tracking students, the school's office, all the data track. It's amazing how many data trackers we have at the campus level, at the district level. To ensure that we're not missing those kids. And so what you're seeing is just is wraparound services and having a better handle on where our kids are.
That's a fee. Thank you.
This is some good information. Thank you. And I applaud you for the update from the. The way that everything looks. So I had a question. Do we have any idea why the special ed? Students, why there was such a decrease between 18 and 20?
So I would have to look, I don't know, Dr. Hino, specifically, I would have to research that more. I would be. Guesstimating if I spoke to it.
I think definitely we need more research on that, but we also have to. Look at the special ed category covers all students. And so some students are not ready to graduate. So there's years that we will have more students that matriculate all the way through. And then there's years that parents ask for them to stay a little bit longer with us. But we'll. Look deeper into this and see why we are regressing. And if it was just a population of students that matriculated and were ready to graduate. So in here you have all special ed students, those that are in the gen ed clause, as well as those that are in the special programs.
Thank you. But I think we see a lot of success here around the interventions and the other programs, like you said, that we have in place. To give students those opportunities, yes, to graduate when they normally wouldn't have.
Things especially is is another place where. Not so much anymore, but for many years we undercounted or under evaluated. Special ed students. And I did see that there's an increase in the the percentage of specialized students. Because those kids are being evaluated and receiving services at greater rates than they had in the past. So.
And also keep in mind, I I don't think I did a good job of explaining this. This is the four year longitudinal graduation rate. We do, actually, they do give us five year and six year and other components. And that's when you see the specialized numbers increasing. I think Dr. Hino was kind of alluding to that, that some, some of our more severe specialized students are graduating. They're just not graduating within the four year criteria.
Sorry, I have another question. And maybe you can help me understand this. So on 27. We have class of 2020 overall, all students graduation rate of 86%. But if you go back to page 16. And you look at the spring numbers. Those students, at least some of those students are going to be in those 2018 to 2019 numbers. That have now dropped in the 2020, 2021 school year. So how could our graduation rate? Be where it is if we're saying that.
Because of star.
Star three through eight.
Yeah. So a couple, several things, the students are able to retest. You know, especially at these E O C levels, they have to retest to pass. There's also the I G C, which allows you are able to do work towards. Towards meeting standards essentially in in star for two subjects of failure. So. Between the time, if if a student is on pace, their last E O C happens in their junior year, the U S history. And so they have that time and we have three, there's a summer administration of the exam. December, and then again, the the May administration, everybody knows about. So they have all that time to also make that up. So even though there's a failure rate here, that doesn't mean that our retesting rate doesn't improve. And then the I G C also is a very helpful buoy for, you know, areas and subjects where a student just can't seem to pass the exam.
The I G C, the individual graduation committee. So we have students that have attempted to take their exams. So there's five. And the law actually started way back a few years back and they've allowed it to continue. So if a student can pass three of the five, the other two, they continue to attempt to pass. However, the individual graduation committee at each campus has the opportunity to give the students. Additional work to show that they understand and can master that specific subject. So if it's algebra. One that they have failed and they've attempted to take it all four years and they continue to fail. Will give them either an online course or will give them an additional class to show mastery. And then they're able to graduate. So the law is actually intended. To help students that are having a difficult time meeting the standard of five exams.
All right. So we had just covered the past three years. So now looking at the four year longitudinal graduation rate compared to the region and the state. And this is a correction from your copy, our headlines a little different here. But the economically disadvantaged students and those identified as two or more races had a higher four year longitudinal graduation rate than their counterparts in the region and state. So the opposite of the graduation rate is the dropout rate. So for class of 2018 to 2020 dropout rates have decreased for all student groups with two exceptions. And this is our our district's data for class of 18, 19 and 20. Thinking this is a time when the American Indian, the enrollment was 30 students and Pacific Islander was 16, as you're seeing those wild fluctuations. Okay, now looking at the dropout rate compared to the region and the state. Spring ISD had a lower dropper dropout rates than those in the region four and the state. I'm sorry, economically disadvantaged. I missed that part of it. So we're transitioning into different data now. So this data source is now two years behind. So we were, this is the 2021 taper, we were all the graduation rates, the dropout rates, everything was based on. 20 class of 2020 and now we're looking at 1819. So in spring ISD, the region and the state also declines in graduate graduate enrollment in Texas higher education and the percentage of graduates. Graduates who completed one year of Texas higher education without enrollment and developmental course. And so this is an interesting slide for us. We were talked, we've actually had a meeting with emerged and we had a meeting with one goal. In the past two days, Dr. Hino and I have been on these calls. And this is a, this is a trend that they're seeing actually nationally. For COVID, this is not, this is pre-COVID essentially with the data. However, we are seeing that the decline, if you go out to 19 and you go out to 20, that our students aren't. Not only our students, but the region and the state, the students are not attending college immediately after high school. Various factors in that, but the the trend is to is actually declining for everybody. Doing a complete different amount of different source of data. This is a staff breakdown by type, and I want to make sure that you pause and read the different categories with the educational aids, auxiliary staff. Teachers, the professional support, which also, which includes our counselors, our diagnosticians, our librarians, et cetera. Our campus administration and our central administration. But should be noted that our professional support staff, which again includes our counselors and our librarians and the such, is a higher percentage than the region and the state. Or our central administration is a lower percentage than the region and the state. Looking at our teaching staff by their highest degrees. Compared to the region and the state, spring ISD has higher rates of teachers with master's degrees and doctorates and a lower rate of teachers with no degrees. There's no degrees can be those, as an example, district of innovation teachers who have the work field experience that you all approve. Rather than the college experience. Our next look is that teacher staff by years of experience. Spring ISD has higher rates of teachers with five or fewer years of experience compared to the region and the state. Just kind of, it is separated by beginning in one to five years, but just to help you do that mental math that. Less than five years is 41.9% for the district, 37.3%. thirty seven point three percent for the region and thirty four point five percent for Texas. Okay, this next one is the teacher new staff average salaries by years of experience. And spring I S D has a higher, higher average salaries in the region and state. So this part includes the taper part, taper report part. We also have other required reporting that we're, that we're just going to briefly go over to, over tonight. We need to go over the accreditation status, the report on violent or criminal incidences. The P E M's financial standards report has a paper copy has been provided. And then previously presented what in October twenty twenty one was the campus performance objectives. So the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one accountability rating was not rated declared state of disaster. Twenty twenty one special education determination status was needs intervention. Twenty twenty one accreditation status was accredited and twenty twenty one first rating was superior achievement.
Question for needs intervention for special education. Can you talk more about what that means?
Yes, and so I think some of our board members that have been here with us, we've been working for a while now in special education. There are several areas where we're working on, not only the student achievement that you see in our data where our students are struggling, but also in our compliance, meaning our our meetings held that are truly constituted or following all the requirements. So we are still working through that. Under our leadership of Dr. Edwards, our new executive director, you'll see that we put changes in place to support this work. But again, it is something that we are consistently working very closely with T A and their monitoring to ensure that we can move out of this needs intervention status. And you've seen this for several years, unfortunately.
And so our violent and criminal incidences, this is based on a P E M's four twenty five report from twenty twenty one. And so we actually have it compared to the nineteen twenty actions. When you see the grand total, you'll see that there's a marked decrease from two thousand thirteen incidences to three hundred and forty two. The highest applying incidences can be found under number four, which is possessed, sold, used or was under the influence of marijuana or other controlled substance with fifty, accounted fifty two. And then going to forty one, which is the last line on this slide. Fighting in mutual combat excludes all offenses under penal code twenty two point zero one with two hundred and forty incidences. And then this is our grand summary of two thousand thirteen and nineteen twenty to a decrease to three hundred and forty two. This concludes the presentation portion. If you have any questions, any more questions?
Can you speak to as to why the decrease? I mean, it's a positive thing.
Majority of our high school students and then a lot of our middle school students, as Mr. Ant said, were virtual. And so this year we are working through that as the students are now all face to face.
I have a question on teachers. If we go back to page six, very beginning, we know that Hispanic teachers are underrepresented and white teachers are overrepresented. So I'm wondering, what are the efforts to recruit more Hispanic teachers, grow more Hispanic teachers, possibly paraprofessionals? What is the response to that that we're thinking?
Absolutely, that that is actually one of our specific strategies in our strategic plan as we look to ensure specifically we are recruiting more Hispanic or more Latino teachers to our district. Just this past week, I have to say that our Mr. Barber from our recruitment, talent recruitment and Dr. Perez had the opportunity to go to El Paso and worked and, you know, to recruit, we have several recruiting trips across the country and really identifying those locations, whether it's cities and or universities where we can bring talent to our district. We also know many people are coming from California, right? Just the cost of living, so really targeting those areas. But you'll see that it is one of our specific strategies under the recruitment and retention of our staff.
Thank you for that. Also one of the slides that I'm sticking for budget discussion opportunities.
Just to piggyback off of her question, because I wrote something similar. Do we have any specific guidelines around that that says, okay, for our percentages of the different demographics that we have? We have to have X number of teachers? Or is it just more of a, it's something we know we need to change and here's what we're doing to do that?
And so really it's a twofold approach, because what we're saying is great teachers are great teachers. So we want to make sure we get the best talent in our, in our district. And once the talent is here, make sure that we are training them and specifically on, you know, the cultural awareness, cultural relevancy, so that any teacher that comes to spring I S D understands who our students are. So that's one part of the work. The other part is very specific around the Hispanic or the Latino population. There's never a fine balance, which I think if you see our African American, just about seven years ago, it was as, you know, lopsided as the Hispanics. Then you can see the efforts are paying off and we're at a better balance. Because we do know, research shows us that when students see their own role models that they can aspire to be and they form those relationships. So we are, you know, we're aware of that. And so specifically targeting Latino teachers to recruit and bring them here, you're also going to see a presentation following this, working with our bilingual program. Because we know that our students are struggling. So, you know, two prong approach, the teachers that we have and the great talent we have, making sure they are able to be responsive to the students we serve and then targeting that population. You'll never have that, you know, equal. I think for us, it's really unique that we were able to achieve that with the thirty nine and forty one percent. We'd love to be there, but we know it's never going to be balanced out to do our very best and then have the best talent in front of our students.
I'll spell for teachers, if you go to page thirty four. Just wondering, so we noticed that spring had higher rates of teachers with five or fewer years of experience. So just if you could speak to what are the supports or the resources, professional development coaching, what types of response will we have to that? Since we know we have such a large sector of new teachers.
That is a challenge that we continue to experience, you know, in spring. And I know our H R department, Dr. Hill, Chief Hill is not here with us today, but we have a full program developed specifically from our workforce development team. You'll see that this year we have a very strategic and focused induction program where the teachers are not going to the school, they're coming first to workforce, to our teacher facility where we specifically go over, we do one whole day of springway assistance and routines. We need to make sure that they understand who our students are and then understand the routines that we have. Then we spend half a day focusing on our curriculum, making sure that our teachers understand what they're going to be faced with. So this is the first year that we've had a very strategic induction program. And then also a very robust mentoring program where we've partnered our zero to one year experienced teacher with an expert, with a mentor. And, you know, I'm really proud of the work that's been done in our workforce development team. We have a monthly newsletter that goes out to our mentors and mentees. We also have sessions that the mentors come to, the mentees come to, and then they come together. And so I'm going to call out names and I'm not going to call everyone else out, but Ms. Barber, Laurie Barber and Cherry. Can't think of her last name. Matt, can you? Wilcox. They have done an amazing job in tracking our teachers, knowing who they are, visiting them and then making sure that the mentors stay side by side with them. So our goal, although this has been the most challenging year for us, is to retain the talent. We've invested in them, we poured in them, now we want to make sure that they stay with us. But yes, what you came and saw part of the training that day and you saw, you know, one of the things that was so interesting and heartwarming when Ms. McDaniel's toured with us is that on that Friday, we do it every other day is a cyclical session. She was able to join us that Friday and actually saw our specific strategies that we are using to recruit teachers. So she saw how some teachers had left spring, retired and or left. And we specifically reached out to them and said, come back, we need you. There were people there that had done that. There were people there from, what was it, Minnesota, Oregon? Where we've sent our recruiters out there, people were there. We also had teacher aides that were coming in as teacher aides looking to become a certified teacher. And so, you know, I think little by little, we, we're gaining that traction in the specific targeted groups that we are working with. And then once we bring them here, we need to be able to support them.
I think it's critical that we continue to do that because I, I actually see this growing. We've got a lot of seasoned teachers that are actually leaving the profession. And so I think we're going to see more with less experience. I mean, six, seven years ago, we didn't even have a workforce development team. You know, so we've done a lot, you know, to try to ensure that we're building talent and that we're growing and that we're providing them what they need. Where I think, what I'd like to see us do more of is follow up. So I know we've got the new facility, we're doing more teaching and development. We've got the teach up building, we've improved our onboarding process. But who's checking in at year two, year three, year four? I mean, how are we closing, closing the circle to make sure that we continue to develop them in their growth and meet them with the resources that they need to continue to grow? Everybody doesn't need the same thing. Right. You know, so how do we get that teacher what she needs to continue to, or he needs to continue to grow and develop?
And President Durant, I'm glad you said that because that's where I was going. Because a lot of, you need support beyond that first year. You can use mentors beyond that first year. And then thinking about professional development, that continuing growth for teachers. So just keeping that in mind too. Thank you.
Definitely, and you know, just to, one of the pieces that you heard about back in June and throughout the fall semester is that T class grant, that forty million dollar grant that we received. Part of that, what we call decision for, it is specifically devoted to grow your own. And so if you'll recall, we will be paying, we right now have had meetings with teacher aides that are in our district that are interested in becoming teachers, certified teachers. So there's two tracks, you may be a teacher aide without a degree. And so through this grant, we will pay for your degree and your certification. We also have teacher aides that are cert, that have degrees and only need certification. So through that grant, we will be grow, what we call grow your own and paying for that. I think it's, it's important, like you said, that we continue and follow that. So think about the opportunity culture that we talked to about the last time. I know Ms. Newhouse was very excited about that work because it is collaborating and it is those master, what we call master, master classroom teachers, M C Os, that will get to work with those other teachers that, I may be a second year teacher, a third year teacher, but I still need that support. And so those pieces through that key class grant, we are working through and developing to launch for next year.
And with the opportunity culture, will we get updates on how the process is going with that?
Absolutely, we just had some interest meetings with principals and they will be submitting their applications because we want principals to choose to be part of this. And so we will be selecting five to seven campuses and then, of course, they'll be coming and, and providing updates for you all.
Thank you.
On, on that point about teachers, so we're experiencing this great resignation where lots of high quality, experienced teachers are fatigued and are just leaving the field. And I choose to see that as a massive opportunity downstream. Right, like in three or four or five years, there'll be a bunch of very experienced teachers that may be interested in coming back to the field. And if we position ourselves properly with things like opportunity culture and opportunities for experienced teachers to be mentor teachers, we could flip this graph that always has us with the, you know, more one year teachers than everybody else in the region, we could flip that around if we, if we are strategic.
So there are no other questions? I know we need to do a public hearing on it or is this official?
We do, I believe it's scripted in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is because we are only presenting this once, we have to, it does need to be a public hearing. So I was just asking, Mr. Bigley, on the next steps to move to that. If you're done with your questions, of course.
I just want to say thank you for the report, the way it was put together. I like the, the data year over year and all the background information, so I just want to say thank you for that.
And much of that, much of that is the masterwork of Kendall McCarty, who's in fact there.
Fantastic job as always, Dr. Cox, thank you. Dr. Bigley, do we have, Mr. Bigley, do we have anyone registered to speak to the agenda items for public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Yeah, we don't have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing. And so before we move on to our next agenda item, I'm going to give everybody a short break because we've been going over two hours. It would take just like five minutes because it's a long night, so I don't want to take too much time, but let's just take a short little break. Thanks. Be here all night. All right, thank you. Okay. For our next topic, I'd like to recognize our chief of schools, Michael Perez, correct? Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Everybody want to see my pretty face? Okay, all right.
So thank you, Madam President. This evening, we are asking the board to review and consider the update on the instructional programs for emergent bilingual students. The update this afternoon will be on the program model, which is designed to increase student grade level achievement related to academic performance and academic language acquisition in both English and Spanish for our bilingual students at the elementary level only for the bilingual program. The update was developed through collaborative efforts across multiple departments, parents, teachers and administrators grounded on relevant research. This evening I have Marie Mendoza, Executive Director of Instructional Services, and Letty Hook, Director of Multilingual Programs, and they will provide you a brief presentation on this strategy.
Members of the board, Madam President, Dr. Hosa, it's our privilege to bring you this update on the instructional programs for our emergent bilingual students. You may have seen in the past that emergent bilingual students were referred to. You may have seen in the past that emergent bilingual students were referred to as LEAP, Limited English Proficient. Or English learners. This evening, we'll be referring to the student population as emergent bilinguals. As um in the state, the language has shifted a bit um since September of twenty twenty one. So this evening, we'll be going through our enrollment data. We'll be looking at the demographics of our emergent bilinguals. We will look at the academic performance of our emergent bilinguals. We'll then take a look at our instructional bilingual program models. And then provide an update on a proposal that we have for our bilingual programming instructional model. As we move forward. Beginning in September of twenty twenty one, we developed a task force. You just had an opportunity to look at the TAPER report. In the majority of those areas, you saw that emergent bilinguals were below some of the other populations in our district. Our EV students continue to struggle. Therefore, based on our historical and current EV student performance data and the latest research. We had a task force committee that reviewed our elementary bilingual program. We have committee members, some of which are here in the audience this evening. Um that represented a diverse population. We had campus administrators. Um different staff members from central office. And then our district support staff members. And importantly, we had a parent who is here this evening as well. Miss Posaba. So what are some of the things that this um task force did? We had an opportunity to review our local, state and national research on bilingual programs. We had feedback provided to us from the committee members. We were able to analyze our quantitative and qualitative data by program type. And we were able to look at our results-driven accountability or RDA data by program type. We had the opportunity between September and January to review all of these pieces and then look at. What our students or how our students were performing in our current bilingual program. This was a cross-functional task force team that took a deep dive into the research. And the effectiveness of our program for K-five. So now let's take a lo- a deeper look at our emergent bilingual program enrollment. So as you heard earlier from Dr. Cobb, our district's emergent bilingual program. Um participants are steadily increasing over time. So you can see over the ten-year period, our, the numbers have increased from six thousand five hundred and seventy-six students. To well over nine thousand bilingual students in our program. While that has been occurring simultaneously, you see that our overall district population has been on the decline. From thirty-six thousand five thirteen down to thirty-three thousand students. In addition to that, some other interesting notes. Our our high school students, one thousand four hundred and sixty of those students. Have been in our school system for six years or more. Of those, one thousand one hundred and eight have been attending school in Spring Independent School District. Of those, nine hundred and thirty-six have been in our bilingual program in our early years, elementary years. One hundred and ninety-two of those students participated in our ESL program at the elementary level. And eighty of those students are what we call parent denials or parent waivers. So now let's take a look at our three through five emergent bilingual students' star performance. I will draw your attention to the header. Our EV students perform better when they take their elementary star exams in English. Than when they take that exam in Spanish. And this graphic depicts that. As a reminder, we have twenty um five elementary schools where bilingual programming is offered. But when our students have the opportunity to test in English, they are actually performing, if you notice on that chart. At a higher level than our overall students in the district. So as you may be aware, we are required to have our students participate in Tellpass. It is the measure, as Dr. Cobb mentioned, on how our students are acquiring English language proficiency. I want to draw your attention to the green sliver for each grade level. That green sliver gives you an idea of the amount of students, a percent of students, who are at the advanced high levels. So for example, in first grade, you see that's very small, two point six percent, and that's actually kind of what we expected that level. As our students who are in our bilingual program move up in grade levels. You will note that that advanced high level is still very small. So they're not progressing at the rate that we would like them to be progressing at the elementary level. As a reminder, all of our students in our district are required to participate in Tellpass. And Tellpass has four language domains, listening, speaking, reading and writing in English. So let's take a look very quickly at our emergent bilingual graduation and dropout rates. I'll draw your attention to that header. While the EV graduation rate continues to increase and the dropout rate decreases. Both are still below the district performance level. So I'll draw your attention to this last year in twenty twenty-one. You see, we had a huge increase from sixty-one point eight percent graduation rate to seventy-two point five percent graduation rate. While we celebrate that, we understand we still have much work to do. And many of our students, as I mentioned, have been what we call long-term EL students. But let's take a look now at our bilingual instructional models. And more importantly, our research that this task force had an opportunity to take a deep dive into. So we have been operating for several years now, what's called a late-exit bilingual instructional model. I want to draw your attention to the red. The red on this chart indicates the amount of Spanish instruction. Over the lifespan of kindergarten through fifth grade. You will notice that in a late-exit model, there is a strong emphasis on Spanish language instruction. Throughout the entire program. So why is that important? Well, let's take a look at what the HERC and Rice University research has shown. Between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty, Spring ISD. Has created more long-term English learners, or what they term LTELS. Than other Houston-area schools. So you'll see up at the top, fifty-nine point nine percent of our students who are in our program. Have been classified as what is called long-term EL students, contracted EL. In the Houston area, you're looking at forty-seven point seven percent.
Can you define that? What does that mean?
LTEL? That means they've been in our program for an extended period of time. Five, six, long-term. They've been in our program. So when I went back, if I go back to the other slide. Find it. Oh, maybe not. Um, we talked about our student, when we, when I was here, we talked about our students who are in the high, at the high school level. Little over fourteen hundred of them, they've been classified as emergent bilingual or formerly LEAP. For an extended period of time. The whole goal of Language Support Services is to help our students acquire English. And exit the program or be reclassified as non-emergent bilingual, non-LEAP. And so we've had students who have been in the program for numerous years, who have not met the exit criteria. And so Rice has done this research study on all the, uh many districts, not all, many districts in our Houston area. And it started looking at what percent of our students in this area are long-term. Meaning they haven't met the exit criteria necessary to be reclassified. Because as a state, the whole notion behind bilingual education. Is to help them acquire enough English to have access to the curriculum in Spanish. But then make sure that we're providing them the language support so they are able to perform at high levels in English.
Can we go back to that slide real quick?
This one?
Um with the Tellpass score progression. So. The numbers are kinda tiny, but so each year, and just correct me if I'm wrong. Um each year, the goal is wherever a student, um whatever their level, the goal is that they will progress. One years, uh make one year's progress the following year, right?
At a minimum, yes.
At a minimum, right. So am I, is it correct that it seems as if the students are getting stuck at intermediate? Okay.
Yes. So intermediate and and sometimes at the advanced level as well. And so that's a very good question. In order, there's exit criteria, right? Reclassification criteria. One of them is to show that they are proficient in English as well as meeting the standard on star. And so what we're looking at here is, hmm, we may have students who are testing in Spanish and doing very well. And we need to really focus on how are we supporting, not just talking to them in English. But developing academic English proficiency. And so this assessment has, as I said, those four language domains that are equally weighted at twenty-five percent each. Listening, speaking, reading and writing. And thus our emphasis on those areas. Are there questions on this slide? Okay, so we just looked at the current program model, which is a strong emphasis on Spanish. We just looked at those students and we talked about the number of students, the percent of those students who are long-term. And how much higher we are in spring for those particular students over the Houston Region Four area. So now let's take a look at another um model. So we've talked a little bit about how we are in what's called a late-exit model. You see, in that first, on the first side, it's transitional bottle, a bilingual, either early exit and late exit. So you see the split with the language distribution, Spanish and English. We also in spring operate, right now, a two-way dual-language program at two campuses. And the other model that you see right there is what's called a one-way. Two, uh one-way by dual-language uh program. What is the difference? The difference with a one-way program is all the students who are sitting in that class are classified as emergent bilingual. That is, they need the criteria, they are in need of language support. So you see that in a one-way program, there's an equal distribution between Spanish language instruction. And English language instruction. So what does that mean? Currently, we're implementing a late-exit bilingual instructional model, which emphasizes Spanish language. While a two-way model provides students the opportunity to develop both languages beginning at kindergarten. So I'll take you back and let you look right there. Look at kindergarten with our late exit. And then I'll show you what we are looking at now, which is fifty percent of the time in English. And fifty percent of the time in Spanish, right from the start in kinder. So what does HERC say and Rice? If you'll notice, they talk about protective factors. One of the protective factors for students so that they don't become long-term EL students. Is that they participate in dual immersion or bilingual programs. So you'll notice, when you look at that, students who have participated in dual immersion only. Are much, much less likely to become long-term EL students.
Say that again.
As we look at the research collected from Rice University. Students who participate in dual immersion, one-way or two-way. Are less likely to become long-term EL students. So because of the program model, the way it's designed, those students have a better chance. Of not becoming long-term, meaning they're classified as um emergent bilingual for four, five, six, seven, eight. Sometimes nine years. They're meeting the exit criteria. So this is what they call a protective factor, less likely to become long-term. When they participate in that program. Then you'll see if that goes up, it's more likely when they're in ESL only. And it goes up as you look across the graph.
So when I first got here. Um I attended a presentation much like this where we talked about developing. A two-way dual-language program with a cohort of native Spanish speakers and. Half native Spanish speakers and half English speakers with the idea that the English speakers wouldn't be learning Spanish. And the Spanish speakers would be learning English and they would be supporting each other in this learning. And so. I I have been wanting expansion of that particular program since I've been here. And I understand it's difficult to recruit teachers and grow the program out, but it's like reading this, it looks like it's saying that. We're we're focused on this other model that isn't there.
So we have, we have been operating. For the majority of our emergent bilinguals who qualify for a bilingual program. They have been in a late-exit program. We have that. And in addition to that, we have a two-way dual-language program. Where you're right, there are two language groups in the class. And we have that at two sites. What we are looking at now is all of the other students. And we have four thousand one hundred and forty-nine students. Um pre-K through fifth, who are currently classified as bilingual. They need bilingual language support. So what we're talking about tonight is how do we support those students in an equitable fashion? And providing them the best program model type that will get them what they need. Proficiency in English, honor their home language and help them meet exit criteria. What this research from Rice is telling us is, the way to do that more rapidly and effectively. Is through what we're going, we're presenting this evening, which is one-way bilingual programming, one-way. Um dual-language.
Okay, I I guess I'm.
Well, they would have the exact same wonderful um strategies that our two-way program has. The only thing that changes is with the kiddos that are being served. So in the two-way, you're right, that's the Cadillac program. We have two groups, English and Spanish. Now we have our Spanish-speaking kiddos that would get the same benefit. But the only difference is this teacher, the one-way teacher, only has bilingual kiddos. Whereas Marie, the two-way, she's got both groups. Same benefits, but it's a different population.
So really what we're talking about is the language distribution, this right here. So in a one-way and two-way, we have students right from the very beginning. Having high exposure to Spanish for fifty percent of the time and high exposure to English. Here's another interesting fact about the emergent bilinguals in our district. The majority of them are what we call simultaneous learners, right? They were born here. We don't have a lot of students who are immigrant students, nine hundred and something, I think, total. Out of the over, almost ten thousand EV students in our district. Forty-one hundred of those students are classified as bilingual. So we've been giving them all of this instruction in a late-exit model. High scaffolding with Spanish instruction. High scaffolding with Spanish instruction for a longer extended period of time. And our students were born here. So we want to honor, listen to what the research says. Look at the programming, fifty percent of the time in English, fifty percent of the time in Spanish. So our students acquire English and are proficient and they're truly bilingual.
Allow me to speak this out loud so I can make sure that I'm processing.
Yes.
So what we've been doing is, uh, Spanish-speaking children started off getting almost all of their instruction in Spanish. And then as they progressed through the grades, less and less of it was in Spanish until it was all in English. Um, and at that point, they were taking these exams and, uh, not performing well. And so what we're proposing is to give them equal amounts of academic English and academic Spanish. Cause I, me and, uh, Trustee Durant, President, President Durant talk all the time about portrait of a graduate, profile of a graduate.
Yes, sir.
And so my ultimate goal is to have everybody speak in Spanish and English. It may be some Mandarin and German in there. And so that's what you're saying is instead of it being a classroom with English, native English and native Spanish, it's just a classroom with native Spanish, but they're getting the same instruction as the kids in the two-way program. All right, I'm clear.
It's getting us closer to the Cadillac model. The one that you want everybody on.
I'm clear, I got it.
So it's, it's, it's additive almost. When we think about it, it's not subjective, it's an additive model. And that's what research shows when they participate in those programs, they're less likely, they call it protective. They're less likely to be long-term. Here's some more research. These are, um, well-known researchers, international researchers in the field of bilingual, uh, ESL education, Thomas and Collier. I want to draw your attention to the top two lines. The top one is what we already have at two campuses, right? Two-way dual language programming. What we are proposing is one-way for everyone else. Equitable access to dual language instruction. Why? Because those are the top two performing over time. This was an extensive longitudinal study. And clearly you can see, look at that yellow line. That's what we currently have. It's substantially lower performing over time than those top two.
And what are some of the barriers that are stopping us from going to two-way with everyone?
Well, right now, as you know, well, maybe money, but it's also what Mr. Adams talked about is a two-way model requires that we have the English speakers and the Spanish speakers. And right now, the two campuses that we have, they're growing and they're up to third grade. So we're seeing the success. But it's always very difficult to tell a parent that has an English-speaking child to say, you're bringing your child to school and they're going to learn to read in Spanish. So it's very challenging. So I think we're growing those models and definitely want the two-way for all children. However, what we're proposing is continue the two-way growth. Because ultimately that gets us closer to our portrait of a graduate where we believe all children should be at a minimum bilingual. Um, but it also will help the students that are currently in the bilingual program and are not successful. The data is showing us and you see that little yellow, um, line up there. And the numbers that we have is we have children in middle school and high school that are still classified as emergent bilinguals or long-term English language learners. And you know, in middle school and in high school, we do not have bilingual programs. And so the students are struggling. You see how our dropout rate for the English language learners is much higher. The graduation rate, as Ms. Mendoza said, we're celeb- celebrating because it's higher. But our general education graduation rate is at eighty-nine percent. And so our English language learners are graduating at a much lower rate. And so the work that this task force did, did was to go back. Where is it's coming from? And it's coming from a bilingual model that we've been implementing for several years now that is actually holding our students back. And so the proposal, I think, is what they're getting to now is that we are proposing to get to the Cadillac, have the two-way dual language program for our English and Spanish speakers. And that our Spanish speakers also have access to that Cadillac model. And that we implement a one-way dual language, uh, program.
I also think, I think there's budgetary constraints, but I, I do believe we can overcome through awareness and education. Because as a parent of an English student, to not want my child in that class says, I don't want my child bilingual. You know, and so I don't think they really understand that it's an opportunity for your child to be bilingual. And I think we can do a better job of delivering that message. Marketing that and getting everyone in the two-way.
So this is a slide that shows you the distribution of English instruction and Spanish instruction. I want to draw your attention to the six percent. That's what's called the bridge. And so we want to make sure that we provide opportunities for students to make connections between both of those languages. And that's what that six percent of the time is for.
And that's like math is done in English. So during the bridge, I bridge over to Spanish. So if I taught you equation in English, now you're going to hear it in Spanish, ecuación, and you're going to make that connection. So it's a bridge between their little brains to both sides of the brain, the different languages. And it's very effective with our two-way dual language program that we have now.
So this is our proposal for your consideration.
We like it.
And Dr. H talked a little bit about that, there and also talked a little bit about several of the benefits. So we want to make sure that students become academically proficient in English. In order to be successful, we are fostering the development of bilingual and bicultural students. We want to reduce the long-term, uh, English language learners that we have. Continue to reduce our dropout rate while we increase our graduation rate. And then eventually, as you stated, provide opportunities for native English speakers to join in the program. Those are the benefits, not just that what we're saying, but what research says. So here's our timeline, strong focus, communication and recruitment. We'd like to begin March and April, going through those items that are bulleted there. Begin bilingual teacher recruitment. We talked a little bit about, um, the efforts that Dr. Perez and HR is, um, in, involved in right now. Deliver one-way, um, like dual language, uh, program overview training. And then I'm not going to read all of those to you, but you can just kind of see, this is kind of how we've mapped this out. Why? We need a strong focus, communication, recruitment and training plan. And that's what we plan with your blessing to implement with all of the stakeholders. That concludes our update for this evening. If you have any other questions, we are here.
I, I do have a question about the recruitment of the bilingual teachers because I think that traditionally that has been a very difficult type of teacher to recruit. Do you have some special plans or some way that, that this is going to be terribly attractive for them to work with us?
So that's the challenge, right? Actually in Texas and, 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 and be, being able to bring and bridge some of the gap and having the, the teachers, right? Uh, right now, I was actually working with Mr. Alan Barber in Human Resources. And there's some actual, uh, recruiting trips in Corpus, uh, in South Texas to, uh, you saw the data, right? We have a high number of first new teachers. So with our starting salary, we are able to attract. And so in, in, in doing so, I, I know myself, I've worked in South Texas as well. So knowing, uh, the recruiting fairs, knowing the culture, knowing the people, being able to really go out there, sell our district and provide all of the benefits of living in a city like Houston. But more importantly, uh, the opportunity to make a difference in the kids in our community in Spring ISD, right? So that's really what we're going to, to be doing in branding, uh, with the teachers so that we can attract them. They can stay and, and, and I'm confident that, uh, in doing, uh, some of these strategies, we'll be able to have a lot more bilingual teachers with experience that can come in, uh, with this program. And in fact, if you look at South Texas, a lot of the school districts are moving in this direction already. And so, uh, we're looking to bring people with experience. So that way, we just add a lot of value to our scholars, uh, to our parents with the communication and the education so that they can see the value of not only this one-way, but also the two-way language program.
And we just went through a Tapper report where graph after graph after graph, I saw that the lowest performing groups were ELs. They weren't using EDs yet and, uh, special ed. So it looks like this is something that would really target that, uh, problem with the population not working up to their potential.
That's exactly why I thought.
So starting this program, would it be starting with like a fresh class of pre-K and then running up to fifth? Or are you going to take in anybody from pre-K through fifth grade?
Anyone that qualifies for the bilingual program, this, this would be our bilingual program. This would become the bilingual program at all the campuses for, um, emergent bilinguals that qualify.
So it is one of the state-approved bilingual mo- uh, models that we can select.
And it's actually TA has now even hired at the state level, a dual language coordinator to work with Julie Lada, our director at the state level, because it's becoming such a coveted program. All our districts around us have gone one-way. So with our kiddos being transient, sometimes if they move or we have children move in, they're coming from a one-way program.
And then for our middle school, and this might be a different conversation, what are we doing to help our middle school and high schoolers?
So for middle school and state law says we have to offer ESL services. So that's part of the, the challenge as well. When we have, when we look at that graph, we have students who have spent so much time with the majority of their elementary years in Spanish instruction and they may be doing quite well. And then they, the state says, ah, that's the end of bilingual. They're going into all ESL sheltered instruction. So we do have that where we're providing supports, but it's very different. And so right now, that's what we have to offer. With two-way, I mean, there's a possibility as we move up that that can continue into middle school for two-way for those two language groups. I don't want to confuse anybody.
So I'm sort of wrapping my mind around the way the opportunity culture model can be used. I'm a slow processor, so I'm just now, a month later, really starting to understand that. And I wonder if that relieves some of the pressure in terms of recruiting for these teachers that serve these kids and could potentially serve larger groups of kids.
And, and, and absolutely, right? Cause one of the tenants for the opportunity, uh, culture grant is to have a highly effective teacher that can impact a large number of, of, a large numbers of scholars, right? So that's one model and there's different, uh, variances within that. But I think, uh, to your point, that's, uh, an opportunity that we can explore to be able to attract, retain a highly effective instructional leader that can have a high impact with a lot of scholars rather than your typical twenty-two or twenty-five, depending on, uh, the model that gets chosen through working with the principal and the supports, uh, the ongoing, uh, mentoring and, and, and the PD that, uh, we have in place. So yes, that's something that I wrote down as a, uh, an opportunity to explore and really expand. So thank you for that question.
And we also have to ensure that we're proficient in it, that we've got someone that can truly do both. And that's hard to find.
And I'll tell you that opportunity culture, um, model has so many pieces that we can leverage. I know Dr. Harris, you heard from her, um, last month, um, Latrice Harris. That is, um, as we select the schools, we want to make sure that we're selecting schools with those highly effective, uh, teachers. Because we are recruiting brand-new teachers in the building. Or as Mr. Ant was sharing, they may not be proficient in those two languages. So as we grow this model, what supports are going to be in place for them? And that model is going to be very important for us to be able, able to leverage. And we do, um, as Ms. Mendoza and, um, Ms. Hope, um, explained, we are proposing to the board that we change our model from the late exit bilingual program where we're teaching the majority of the day in Spanish, that we change the model to a one-way dual language, um, program, which is one of the state-adopted models. And because we are changing, it does require the board to take a vote. Anytime that we change curriculums, that we change instructional models, it does require that the board, um, vote on that.
So with that, I'm going to take a motion, uh, to make the change from our late exit dual language model to a one-way dual language model. It's not on the sheet. I'm winging it.
Madam President, I move that we make the change of moving from a one-way model to a two-way model.
Dual language.
Dual language for our students.
Right, so.
Do you have a second?
Clarify.
I think we need to discuss this, I think.
We'll get discussion, we'll have discussion after the motion. We just want to make sure that, um, the proposal, Mr. Ant, is going, moving from a late exit bilingual model to a one-way dual language. From a late exit bilingual model, maybe if you put that, um, slide back up there.
So I'm going to ask Trustee Newhouse to restate her motion.
Sure.
I move that the Spring ISD will move from a late exit bilingual instruction model to a two-way model.
Dual language.
Dual language, which provides an opportunity for our students to develop both languages beginning in kindergarten.
Do you have a second?
Second.
There's, there's a motion on this, we want to.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take care of it, just a minute. Is this, now we're to discussion?
There's a motion on the floor to move from a late exit bilingual model to a one-way dual language model. Floor is open for discussion.
I don't think that's what Trustee Newhouse said. She said two-way. So I was going to do a friendly amendment that you say one-way and it says one-way and two-way.
So the, um, Dr. Jensen. Do you have a friendly amendment? Will you state your amendment?
Uh, instead of just two-way, say one-way and two-way. So we are moving from a late exit bilingual instructional model to a dual language, one-way and two-way model.
Is there a second on the friendly amendment?
A second.
All those in favor? Do you oppose? All right, so we now have a motion on the floor to move from a late exit bilingual model to a one-way and two-way dual language model. The floor is now open for any further discussion. Think we've talked about it today?
Yeah, can I just stress one more time? For those people who, uh, have children that they don't want to learn Spanish, they don't have to learn Spanish. This is a, a option that we are offering now. Okay, yes, I just want clarification.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm prepared, you said you had a committee here, would they like to stand and be recognized? Thank you for your work on this. Our next item tonight, I'd like to recognize our General Counsel again, Jeremy Binkley.
Hi, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Hinaosa and trustees. My first item tonight is a resolution to pay employees regarding the recent winter storm. It is in the red folder that's at your seat. It is, as you know, we, we had some freezing weather, I believe, Thursday, February 3rd into Friday, February 4th. And there was a concern of freezing roads and unsafe travel conditions. And so we did close school for Friday. This is, this, this is slightly different than what you've seen in the past because of the timing of the event. We actually shut down around 6:00 PM on Thursday to make sure all of our employees could get home safely. And nobody was stuck in the buildings late into the evening. And resumed some operations as of 3:00 PM Friday. And so the main clause that I want to call to your attention, and, and it's because I've gotten a number of questions from cabinet. And so I imagine you are going to have some questions too, is the first page at the very bottom. That says further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District hereby authorizes the administration to compensate those employees. Who would have been on duty at 3:00 PM Friday, February 4th, 2022, but were not required to return to work that day. The reason being because we had let everyone off for Friday, we didn't have school or students at the school. We didn't need bus drivers to come transport those students. We didn't need child nutrition staff to come in at 3:00 PM on a Friday afternoon. We didn't need our teachers and other employees who would have otherwise been at work to come in at 3:00 PM. So this basically allows us to continue to compensate everyone for the day Friday. But 3:00 PM is the cutoff for any extra pay for anyone who would have worked during the, the winter weather. And, and braved those potentially icy conditions. If that makes sense. We didn't, we didn't want anybody to think they weren't going to get paid or for the language to potentially not pay someone. Because they should have been here from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock and they weren't. Are there any other questions regarding the resolution? Basically, we just want to make sure that we retain our employees and that we continue to pay everyone.
Entertain a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution regarding school, school closures due to the winter storm.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Adams that the board moved to adopt the resolution regarding school closures due to the winter storm. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Binkley.
All right, and so my next item is on page 43. And it is going to be a discussion to potentially modify the instructional calendar. In addition to page 43, you also have a copy of the 2122 instructional calendar at your seats. Because I think that may be informative to your discussion here in a moment. In building the current school year, the district did build in additional instructional minutes beyond the required minimum. And there has been some conversation among administration to potentially give students a holiday, using some of those built-in additional instructional minutes. And allow staff an opportunity to plan, prepare, or you know, potentially something else, depending on what the board's discussion is and what you all want to do. There are a couple of options here that have identified some dates. Those dates were identified prior to our winter storm. And I wanted to point out that we did have a weather day, September 14th for Hurricane Nicholas. We did have a weather day, February 4th for the winter storm. But with that, I will turn it back over to President Durant.
Yes, essentially, we built enough minutes in our calendar for two, two additional days. For extenuating circumstances. So we do have those two days. I don't know if you all recently have heard, our neighboring district, Albee, recently made some changes around three additional days. Where the students aren't coming to school and it's giving the teachers a chance to come in and work and get caught up. And, you know, in their classrooms, you know, without the students being there. And so we have those two days ourselves right now. So I think what the district is proposing are two options. That we allow those two days where the students do not come to school. On those two days, the question on the table is, is do we give our staff those two days off? Or do we allow our staff those two days to come in and get caught up? And do some additional planning without the students on site? And so the, the first option would be to modify the calendar to make it student holidays. And then the section would be to approve the instructional calendar to modify it for staff. Dr. Hinaosa, did I articulate that correctly on how you explained it to me?
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And, and I think Mr. Binkley talked a little bit about it. We do have this year a calendar that's 180 days. And so we built in minutes. And so the discussion, as Mr. Ant shared, is there's actually two options on the table. And it is, you know, as we look through this, as the administration looked through this. It was prior to the ice storm day that we just had on Friday. And in, in discussions with the administration, with our teachers and our principals. We know and understand that our school staff, as everyone else, has gone through a lot of challenges. This year, our school staff, specifically our teachers, have not had any professional development days built in. As we've done in years past. This year, we are working straight through 180 days. And so the discussion is, are we at a price that we can provide a student holiday? Which would have the students have the opportunity for themselves to get some rest. And option A would be that only the students are home and we actually use that day as a teacher workday. To allow our teachers time to get caught up. As you know, there's a lot of work that they've been doing with our new curriculum, a lot of work around the reading academies. That this day would be a teacher workday and that they would have time to work in the classrooms and get organized. That's one option. The second option would be that we allow school staff, meaning teachers, counselors, principals. Those custodians that work on the campus, that they would have just a day off. Not come to school and just have a day off with our students. And so while the minutes are built into our calendar, the, the thinking and discussion that we'd like for you all to consider is, do we have a teacher workday and allow our teachers to come in? And have some quiet time on their own? Or is it a teacher holiday? We do have, if you look at the calendar, on February 21st, that is a school holiday. So there would be a break in February. Where our teachers, anyone that's a 180, what we call 187, so our teachers and our students would have a holiday on February 21st.
And in March, we have the, we have spring break.
Spring break.
We'd want to do it, propose it in those other months. You're right. So, so the long and the short of it is, do we have students off those two days? And then do we have staff off or staff in?
Campus-based staff.
Campus-based staff, correct.
So, do we have any idea of what they want? That's what I ask. And I know we've had both discussions. I know I've had teachers that have reached out and have said, oh, my goodness, having that day in my classroom just to have quiet time. Clean my desk out, you know, work on my lesson plans, get organized. They definitely would cherish that. And others, and, and I don't know if you all were on Twitter this weekend, on Friday, there were so many of our teachers working on the reading academy. So even though it was an ice day, you, you saw and we had a lot of teachers working. Because it is, it was a time for them to get caught up. They just couldn't be in the building. So I've heard from both ends, both, both the options would work. But I do know many teachers want to come to the building and have access to the building to get their lesson plans, their books and organize. So we've heard both ends.
One question about the workday. Would that be sort of a protected day? I know a lot of times we say it's a workday, but then teachers have meetings and PLCs and things that we needed to get caught up. All feels in the whole day.
We want to make sure it's a protective day for them.
So what if we just do one and one? Just to make both sides, appeal to both sides.
Speaking of teaching experience. And I looked at the calendar that we have, as you indicated. As we look at the calendar and I indicated, we do have a day off in February for teachers and stu-, along with students. We have a spring break in March. We have another day in April that we have allowed for them. Assuming April 15th is teachers and all as, as well. I appreciate being in the building, working with no students. Where I can meet with my comrades, teachers, I can go to their room and see their lesson plans, what they've been doing. They can come see mine, we can talk about it. It's not a stressful day. It's a relaxing day for you. And I always appreciated that. I also appreciated the days that we had off too, of course, here. But, because at that time, we wasn't, we were not having all of the holidays that we have now. But it looked like now with the calendar, we have provided staff and students with a holiday each month, a day off each month. And I think that's why we selected this calendar, part of the reason we selected it. Because we did, they do have that opportunity on this campus, on this calendar. So I would venture to say I would prefer working in the classroom because we are still behind and I would like to catch up.
I want to echo my teacher colleague, Trustee Newhouse. I, I see this both ways as well. Like, I like coming into my room and, you know, organizing without having to worry about, like you said, having it protected. So I wasn't in a, a grade-level meeting or a content-level meeting. I was in my room working. I also like just having the day off. I will say this. It would have been nice if somebody had shown up for agenda participation and spoke on this. This is an opportunity for teachers to sort of show up and on, at least give us their opinion on this issue. Because I'm more than a decade removed from being in the classroom and I'm not, I didn't teach in a pandemic. And so I don't, I'd like to hear from a teacher what they really think about this.
And that's. Oh, I was going to add, similar to what my colleagues have said, we have been teachers at the same time, we have not taught during a pandemic. And one thing that I do know that a lot of teachers have expressed is nearing burnout. And so I would like to go with or agree with Trustee Correa that maybe we could split half and half. I think that's a good idea to kind of get both sides of the coin. But I do believe that, you know, for the teachers that are going to do reading academies, they're probably going to do it on their couch at home anyway. If they really wanted to do it. So that's just my thoughts. I think teachers really need a break. I know we have days built in, but this year is different than many years prior to. So those are my thoughts.
So how would we construct that motion? Or do you have?
I, I just wanted to bring one other point up. Many teachers have small children. And they would have to pay daycare when they might be doing their work anyway at home, but they'd have, be home with the child. I, I just think that might be an issue or some.
But this is going to impact parents too, because we're going to have school kids out. They're going to have to have childcare if school's out as well. Okay, we've had a lot of discussion.
And so if you look at the motion sheet, there, there are a couple of options for motions there. No, that is.
Yeah, but I think what we're proposing is different from either.
Right.
Of these options.
And so where, and, and I was trying to follow along, but there was, there was a lot. Where did we land?
I don't know. I think I have a split consensus, quite frankly.
Gotcha.
So I think what we're hovering around is Trustee Correa's recommendation that we do one and one. We give them a day off and we give them a workday, a protective workday. And then we have Trustee Newhouse who thinks they would want both workdays. And then we had, you speak to teachers needing a break and want off. But I think, I, I would like to ask for a motion. That we do the student holiday as well as allowing teachers to have one protective workday and one off day.
And I think.
Campus staff. Let me reiterate that. It needs to say campus staff.
To go that direction, my recommendation would probably be that, that you have two separate motions. One, to modify the instructional calendar, which doesn't need a resolution. And so I, I would say first, if you're going to do that, do a motion to modify the instructional calendar for, for whichever days you want to make student holidays. And then the second motion would be to adopt the resolution regarding to, for the one day that's going to be a campus staff day off. Because what the resolution does is it allows us to pay those campus staff. It finds that there is a public purpose and a public interest in paying those campus staff for that day off. And so that's the importance of the resolution. So I would say, if you're going to do that, a motion to modify the instructional calendar. And then a second motion to adopt the resolution for that one day that, that you're going to give campus staff as a holiday. Or if you're going to get through two days, then those two days, whatever those days are.
We're proposing February 14th, yeah, 14th and April, I think, 18th.
That's the second motion. Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve modifying the instructional calendar to make February 14th and April 18th, 2022, a student holiday.
Your second?
My second.
We have a motion made by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee McDaniel. That the Board of Trustees approve to modify the instructional calendar. To, to make February 14th and April 18th a student holiday.
Discussion? So this isn't the one-day student holiday.
No, we're going to do that next.
Okay.
I think I understand what we need to do.
So we need, is there any discussion on this?
The discussion then is sort of around the next motion. So I, I think we're ready to vote on this.
We are. Unless someone has additional comments, I think we have a consensus and I can move to a vote. All right. All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose? All right. So we have five in favor and two opposed, the motion carries. Now the second option is around on-campus staff.
Right.
All right.
And so then the question becomes. And so then the question becomes which of the days would they? Would it be a holiday for campus-based staff? And then Jeremy, does this require, this requires.
The resolution.
Resolution. And so we just need to decide on which day it would be. That's the discussion, February fourteenth or April eighteenth.
I would, as a teacher, I would want to work on campus on April the eighteenth. Because I'm in my testing time period, it's a test, that's testing season. We're in the testing mode uh at that time through May. That day working, getting ready for testing and take the fourteenth as a holiday for teachers.
Any other con- any other thoughts?
If you want to do one and one, I'm okay with that, but I wouldn't like that day.
Well, April eighteenth makes it a uh four-day weekend, which I think is nice. Well, I think that Friday, the eleventh is a half day, it's a half day.
So we're looking for the April date.
Okay, so I if you're ready for the motion.
I am ready for the motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt the resolution to modify the instructional work calendar days. To make April eighteenth a holiday for campus-based staff.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee McDaniel. That the Board of Trustees approve and adopt a resolution to modify the instructional and work calendar. To make April eighteenth a holiday for campus-based staff. Any discussion, additional discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose? All right, we have six in favor and one opposed, the motion carries. We need. An additional motion for the fourteenth for campus staff. Or no? We're good?
Right, because campus.
By modifying the calendar that.
And we'll modify the resolution, um I actually already took out the dates so that we could just write in the appropriate dates. And will, we can take out the student piece since that wasn't part of the motion. We'll make the change to the resolution before it comes for signature later tonight.
Okay, all right, that that works, all right.
All right, I have, I actually have one more item. Um and so if you will turn with me to page forty-six. Um we have CDA local and so uh the board is required to review CDA local, which is our investment policy. Um annually. And so we're actually doing a couple of things tonight, uh the board is doing that review and I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Westbrook's in just a moment to to explain. Um and as part of that review, uh there are some suggested changes to the policy. Again, based on some things that Ms. Westbrook's is about to explain, so tonight, when we get to the vote. What we're asking for is just approval of the first reading and then this would come back in March to approve and adopt the second reading. Uh but this is also taking care of that annual review, so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Westbrook's for a better explanation of the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. The policy begins on page forty-seven of your documents. And at the bottom of page forty-seven, there's one very minor change that's being proposed. And that's just some wording as opposed to having it all as one sentence, we're creating two sentences. That ends with the the those of us that are investment function officers for the district. And then the fact that the district can also retain investment advisors as we've done in the past. So that's truly just grammar and adjusting the wording there. On page one of nine, which is page forty-seven of your book. Is everyone with me? Yes, okay. The next proposed change is on, that starts at the bottom of page fifty-three. Which is page seven of nine of the policy. And so this is where the changes actually begin. And so this is related to collateral, so all district funds that we have entrusted to the district. That are not in an investment pool, so we have funds that are in local government investment pools such as text pool. As we've done for many years, they're specifically for local governments, we have funds in in those pools. And then any funds that are below that threshold that are covered by FDIC insurance, they don't require collateral. But anything else does require collateral. And so our language has been extremely specific over the years. And so what we're wanting to do here and proposing is to standardize that language, what we see with more districts and working with our depository bank. Um we've decided it's best to standardize the language, which simply states. That the district may not designate any collateral that's below the minimum that's required by law. And so that's where you'll see the the twenty-two point five seven reference to the the government code there. So we're standardizing that language a little bit more. Um the next change is related to, we have our depository bank. That is was BBVA Compass that was bought out by PNC. And so PNC handles collateral differently than BBVA. When we were with BBVA, we had an FHLB, which is the Federal Home Loan Bank's letter of credit. That covered our collateral for the district. With PNC, they actually use pledge securities, both are one hundred percent acceptable forms of collateralizing the district's funds. It's just different, and so since we review this policy annually, this gives us the ability to update this language here. To what our our depository bank is actually doing to pledge our collateral.
Okay, so this moving the funds from the hundred and ten percent collateralization down to just or up, I guess down. To the minimum percentage, does that create any movement of funds or is it just?
It doesn't, it doesn't, and so what it does is it it ensures that we're within the law, the letter of the law. And so the language just clearly states that we'll always be within the letter of the law, we can't go below that. Okay, if there are no questions on that, I wanted to just take a quick moment to mention that this is our investment policy. Which of course, any entity that does business with the district in terms of investing or any of our funds. They have to accept our policy by signature, saying that they will adhere to everything that's written here. And also to note is that we do a quarterly investment report that is shared with the board through the board update. Each um each quarter and is also posted on the district's financial transparency website.
Don't forget your mic.
You now entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the investment policy, CDA local, other revenue investments.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of investment policy, CDA local. Other revenues investments.
A second.
Motion has been made by trustee Dr. Jensen and seconded by trustee Carmen Correa. That the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of the investment policy, CDA local, other revenue investments. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Those are all the items I have.
All right. I would like to then move on to our next agenda item and I will recognize our chief of schools again, Dr. Marco Perez.
Good evening again, Madam President, Board and Superintendent, uh I'm very excited uh to uh chair this agenda item. Uh there is a recommended action for the board on this one. So the recommended action is that the board approve uh the notice of grant award for Spring ISD's Twenty-First Century Community Learning Program. Uh before doing so, let me share a little bit about the program, uh the schools, the impact and the uh grant amount so that you can be aware. Of what we've done so far this year with this great opportunity. Uh so TEA, the Texas Education Agency awarded Spring ISD, uh what's known as the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Grant. Uh and as I'm learning, I'm sorry, it's on page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, I apologize. Uh so if you refer to page fifty-seven, fifty-eight of your uh board binder, you will have this information there. And uh the great thing about this uh grant is that it has impacted ten schools. Clark Primary, Clark Intermediate, Bama Elementary, I Can Rock Elementary, Hoyland. Major, Sawyers, Bailey Middle School, Clotton Middle School. And the School for International Studies at B- uh Bama Middle School. And the best part about this is that uh with these grants, we have been able to use these for supplemental student learning. At these ten schools for after-school learning. And it has allowed us to not only include family engagement components, academic enrichment for students. Uh and these, these are students who of course need it the most, but at the same time, it has allowed us to include a. Uh some different enrichment activities for allowing the students to have a strong literacy foundation. And this in turn has also impacted an increase in attendance and discipline because the kids have one more opportunity to be part of something bigger. Uh and something that's fun, something that uh allows them to stay at school where it's a safe haven for them. You have staff that's working with the kids, uh the kids enjoy it and so it's a win-win for everyone. The grant amount is uh one million seven hundred thousand dollars. And so this is a huge amount, it's impacting a lot of kids and it's impacting currently ten schools. The actual uh program uh um the the assistant superintendent that manages and helps. With the oversight of this grant is Kimberly Fontana, she's one of our assistant superintendents of schools. And she works directly with Ms. Carla Jones Wiley, which she is the Twenty-First Century Program Coordinator. That manages this this actual grant uh with each of these schools.
Thank you, I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the notice of grant awards for the Spring ISD Twenty-First Century. Community Learning Program.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the notice of grant award for Spring ISD's Twenty-First Century Community Learning Program.
Second emotion. It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse. That the Board of Trustees approve the notice of grant award for Spring ISD Twenty-First Century Community Learning Program. Any additional discussion?
Um I'm just wondering how we determine which schools will um be a part of the Twenty-First Century Community Learning.
That's what I was going to ask, what's our criteria?
So this is our second um award, we had our first award um that ran for five years. And uh Ms. Wiley, Ms. Jones Wiley is here and at that time, we chose our students that were at highest need. And so when you look at this group of schools, you'll see that six of them are part of our I-zone campuses. Again, student um schools that are at highest need and then the two middle schools. That have or three middle schools that actually have a specialty program um that we have placed there. So again, looking at the student, the student population and their needs and applied for the grant to support them.
Will you say the highest need or? Will you say the highest need, you're referring to the percentage of economically disadvantaged students at the campus?
So yes, but most specifically working at their academic performance. Um and so this grant works on both academic achievement, so the focus is on reading, math and science. As well as the enrichment that gets the kids to stay after school, but specifically looking at academic achievement.
Thank you.
Questions around attendance, uh when I first started in education, before I was ever a teacher. I worked for the California Ed Fund, which is a similar type of program. Um and attendance could be uneven, I'd show up at the school after school and sometimes I'd get eight kids, sometimes I'd get thirty kids. And so I'm curious what the attendance patterns are.
And and so what what I'm going to do to make sure that uh you have the most up-to-date information, I'm going to ask Ms. Carla Jones. If you could please uh come up here and and share some of the uh some of the details uh with regards to attendance by campus. And and trends that overall.
Madam President, Superintendent, and House Board members. Um when it comes to attendance, you are correct that sometimes the attendance is basically, do the boys and girls really want to stay after school? So we do a lot of work with voice and choice, so we actually survey the students to see what things they would be interested in. And we go out and we find those activities for the boys and girls. So our grant is written that every campus is required to provide services for one hundred students. So overall, we service a thousand. So with that being said, we actually track attendance by the hour daily. So what does that mean, that that means that TEA has a system and in that system, we record every hour. And now you have to be in that program at least two hours in order to even be counted present. So we we do have strict standards, but we have it wrapped in fun, so the kids enjoy coming. They have a good time coming, now this year, we um went to three years after school because that was just the new requirement. And so that has been a little bit of a challenge for our little precares, kindergarten kiddos and our first graders. But we're looking at other ways to make sure we recruit that time during the summer, so we have some ideas of little specialty camps when they come up.
I uh am not an expert at this and have not done this, trustee Adams. But uh uh it, what I do observe this, it seems that it's not like an extended school day. It's the activities the kids are doing are very active and um uh it's not just recreation. It's not an extended school day, it's like you're learning these skills in a different kind of format. That's much more um interactive and uh. I'm very excited about that.
Because I can, I can, I can give you a little more information uh concerning that. We do have an academic component and that is steep in literacy, right? And in the area of mathematics, so we do offer those tutorial services and homework help for the students. In addition to that, we call it academic enrichment. So a child may be playing a basketball game, but they may have a teeth written on that lesson plan that talks about patterns. Right, because if you continuously bounce a ball and you do chest passes, that's a pattern that a child is really learning about in the real world context. We looked at this also and we wanted to make sure that the students had many opportunities to learn the same thing in many ways. And so one of the other ways that we did that this year, we actually wrote into the grant. That twenty-five percent of all student instruction will be through hands-on workstation. So that is something that we saw a need for and we are actually going to incorporate our parents into that. We bought the materials so the parents can have the manipulators they need at home that the kids are actually using at school. So that we're really drawing in on that connection. So a lot of what we do is is empowering and equipping our parents to be true partners in education when it comes to moving their child forward.
You may have said it already, I'm wondering, do we, I know we.
You may have said it already, I'm wondering, do we, I know we talked about tracking attendance, do we track the data for the students to show that, yes, Twenty First Century is making, helping to make gains?
Yes, from the inception of the program, when we had it back in cycle nine, from year one, we had increases that were marginal for mathematics and reading. But as we progressed with the grant over the years, at a minimum, we set our standard at outperforming non-participatory students by at least five percentage points at all mastery levels and across reading and math. So we feel like if they're gonna get an additional five hundred and fifty-five hours, then the children should show that they benefited from that. Another big change this year is now that we actually wrote in SEL as a part of our goal. So we are constantly checking in, constantly making sure the boys and girls are getting what they need, not only academically, but emotionally and socially.
Thank you.
Miss Ma.
No questions, but I will comment that in the past, we have been able to go and see, as Dr. Jensen was saying, this program in process, working. And we were very excited about the projects the kids were doing after school in terms of activities. I looked at it, some of them, as a science project or a history project. But learning was going on, and the kids were appreciating, it was a different style rather than just being in the classroom where I'm just sitting down for an hour. So it was a very impressive program. I want to say Ms. Taylor, because I think you.
I know.
I mentioned it to you then, that this was a very good program for enrichment for our students, students after school. And I'm very happy that we have the grant.
I also like that you asked them what they want, you know, because that gets them to buy into it. And that can only help to increase their participation and attendance. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Are we low? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. All right, our next item tonight, I'd like to again recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Durant. Now, first item tonight begins on page sixty-one, and it's our monthly report of taxpayer refunds. And we do have four refunds this month that are over $20,000. A couple of them, the first two, there's one for $37,000 towards the top of the list. And then the next one is for $32,000, about four lines down from there. And both of those are apartment complexes that have protested their values based upon their occupancy levels, where both are around eighty and eighty-five percent capacity. And so they've been given a reduction in value based on that. The third and fourth one, which are towards the bottom quarter of the page, is, one is new construction, the twenty-two thousand nine fifty-one is new construction, and it's just based on the construction cost that it was lowered, that based on the construction cost, the value was less than what the appraisal district had provided. So we had to pay a refund for that. And then the last one is actually one of our top ten taxpayers. And they protested based on equity and just other similar-sized organizations around them. And so that was upheld, and there was a six percent decrease in the value that was assigned by the appraisal district. So we ended up paying a pretty large refund with that one.
So is that Hewlett Packard, when it says HP?
Yes, ma'am.
That, there's been amazing construction going on around there. I wondered if it was in our district. Good.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Mike.
Good lady, didn't it? I would now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the taxpayer refund as presented by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the taxpayer refunds as presented by the administration.
It's been moved by Trustee Correa and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the Board of Trustees approve the taxpayer refunds as presented by administration. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We have a few more items that normally go on consent agenda, but we didn't have a work session because of the winter storm. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Ann Westbrooks.
Thank you, and I appreciate that reminder because I was just ready to keep going. And it's stopping notes. So this next item is actually an informational item that we bring forward every month, so it doesn't require any action. And so this is our monthly report of cooperative purchases that exceed $50,000. And so that list begins on page sixty-three of your packet. And so as was suggested several months ago, we've wrote this report out by the funding source. And so what you'll notice this month is for the first time, you'll see expenditures related to the T-class grant, which Dr. Hina Hosa did a pretty in-depth presentation on that funding source a couple of months back. So that's something new that you'll see on future reports as well.
Chief Westbrooks, this may not be a question for you, it may be a question for Dr. Hina Hosa. But I noticed that there's quite a bit of money being spent on English kits, instructional kits. And at the bottom, they have one that's English and Spanish. I just wanna make sure, as long as we're trying to support that one-way and two-way instruction, do we have enough materials for those teachers?
Yes, and so part of the T-class grant that you'll see coming forth in future items, you'll see that we will have the Amplify Curriculum in Spanish that you'll see in future purchases. And then, of course, part of the work that Ms. Hope in the multilingual department will be doing is evaluating the number of one-way dual-language programs and then making sure that we have all the necessary materials for the teachers to be able to do now, since we're doing fifty percent in English and fifty percent in Spanish all the way through. That's part of the work that they will be doing. So thank you, yes.
And since this item doesn't require action, is it okay to proceed to the next item?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The next item is on page sixty-six of your binders. And this is our annual report on purchasing cooperative fees. So we're required by the Texas Education Code to provide our Board of Trustees with an annual written report of any fees that the district has to pay to be a part of purchasing cooperatives. So beginning on page sixty-six, there's the listing of the fifteen cooperatives that the district utilizes throughout the year. And then, beginning on page sixty-eight, are the fees associated with those memberships to those cooperatives. And so as you can see on page sixty-eight, there's generally no cost to districts to participate in the cooperatives. Instead, vendors pay to participate in the cooperatives. And there's, when there is a fee, it's a nominal fee, such as what we paid the $150 to be a part of the Central Texas Purchasing Alliance. And then, of course, with the Buy Board, which is the Tasbe Cooperative, whenever we purchase buses, we pay per purchase order. So if we buy forty buses, school buses, on one purchase order, we would pay the fee one time. And that's where the $800 fee comes in. And then we have the $100 that's a part of the Texas Comptroller Purchasing Cooperative. So all in all, the costs are very minimal related to the purchasing cooperatives that we're a part of.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. Any questions? You may continue to your next item.
Okay, on page sixty-nine is our first request for proposal for the evening, and this one is for HVAC filters. And so the district did a proposal, and we had three vendors respond. And of those three vendors, we had two that were considered qualified to provide the district with HVAC filters. And so what we've done is ranked the two, and the one with the highest score, we're proposing to be the primary vendor. And then the secondary vendor, if the primary is not available or if they don't have the product available for us. And so both vendors have past relationships with the district and have been able to meet the needs of the district.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees award a contract for the HVAC filters to the providers recommended by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract for HVAC filters to the providers recommended by the administration.
Second emotion.
I have a motion by Trustee McDaniel and seconded by Trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees award the contract for HVAC filters to the providers recommended by administration. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrooks, you can continue with your next item.
Okay, thank you. On page seventy-three is another request for proposal. In this case, it's the HVAC parts and supplies. And so we had a total of six vendors respond to this solicitation. And we are recommending three vendors who met the criteria and met the cut score of eighty to move forward and be allowed to provide parts and supplies to the district as needed. So there's no primary or secondary here, it's just as needed and who has the best price and can meet the need at the time.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees award a contract for HVAC parts and supplies to the providers recommended by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract for HVAC parts and supplies to the providers recommended by the administration.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Trustee McDaniel and seconded by Trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees award the contract for HVAC parts and supplies to the providers recommended by administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrooks, please continue.
Okay, beginning on page seventy-six is a request for proposal for Enterprise WAN Routing System. And WAN stands for Wide Area Network, so it's our district network. And it's through the E-Rate Program, which is a federal program that's put in place to help offset the cost of telecommunications services, such as internet, for the school district. So the request for proposal had four respondents. And we have recommended the highest scoring, which is also a vendor that the district has a history of doing business with. And so we're recommending that the Board approve the recommended vendor for these services.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees award the contract for the Enterprise WAN Routing System to the provider recommended by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract for an Enterprise WAN Routing System to the provider recommended by the administration.
I second.
Then moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees award a contract for an Enterprise WAN Routing System to the provider recommended by administration. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrooks, please continue.
Okay. The next one is on page seventy-nine. And this is a request for proposal for college and career readiness products and services. And so for this one, we had twenty-six vendors respond, or potential vendors respond. And so we're qualifying all of the vendors that actually meet the established criteria and meet that cut score again of eighty, actually seventy, on this particular one. And so we're qualifying several vendors that are capable and have the product and are able to provide the service to the district. And so it's a total of twenty-two vendors that we're recommending that we award the ability to do this business with the district.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees award a contract for college and career readiness products and services to the providers recommended by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract for college and career readiness products and services to the providers recommended by the administration.
Second.
Then moved by Trustee Deborah Jensen and seconded by Trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees award a contract for college and career readiness products and services to providers recommended by administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrooks, please continue.
Okay, and our last, not last item, but our last request for proposal begins on page eighty-four. And this one is for restaurant and catering services. And so what we realized as a district is, or determined as a district, is that in the aggregate, all of our meal purchases were exceeding the $50,000 mark. And so we were at the point where we needed to do an RFP to formally do a request for proposals to formally contract with these vendors to provide that service. And so what we did is a lot of outreach to our vendors that we know we do business with. And so you'll see a lot of familiar names on here. And so we did the outreach, but we also realized that there still may be some vendors that didn't respond on this time around. And so this is an RFP that we'll likely bring back in about six months to make sure that there's still that opportunity for our local vendors to get on the list of approved restaurants and catering services to do business with the district. So we had a total of fifteen vendors respond. And it was, we went through the process of pass fail. And so if they provided all the information that was requested with no concerns, then they passed. And that allows them to be on the list of recommended vendors. We did have one that did not provide the permit, the health permit, and so they were disqualified. But otherwise, all of the other vendors passed. And we're recommending that the district allow them to be able to do business with the district.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees award a contract for restaurant and catering services to the providers recommended by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract for restaurants and catering services to the providers recommended by the administration. Second emotion.
It's been moved by Trustee Deborah Jensen and seconded by Ron DeNewhouse that the Board of Trustees award a contract for restaurant and catering services to. Ms. Westbrooks, you may continue.
Okay, beginning on page eighty-eight, we have our monthly financial report that is provided to the Board via the Board Update once a month. But three times a year, we bring it here as a board agenda item, just to bring, I'm sorry, page eighty-eight. Okay, just to bring line of sight to the report and ensure that everyone understands what's on it and give an opportunity to ask any questions. So we have on the first page, it's our revenue. So we have on the first page, it's our revenues, and so these are actual expenditures, act, actual expenditures and actual revenues received through December thirty-first, which is the halfway point for the fiscal year. So the first page is revenues for the general fund only. And it's broken down by funding source, local, state, federal, and of course, other. And then the second page is expenditures by function and by object. So who's benefiting from, for the, from the expenditure instructional, whether it's payroll, contracted services, broken down in two ways. And the last page of the report is just a comparison between December thirty-first of twenty-twenty and December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, and then the variances amongst the, the revenues and the expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the actual expenditures presented by administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the actual expenditures presented by the administration. I second the motion.
It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by Dr. Jensen that the Board of Trustees approve the actual expenditures presented by administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And Ms. Westbrook, you may continue.
Okay, our last item this evening is on page ninety-two. And it's the second budget review, which is the second time that we've reviewed the budget expenditures and revenues for all of the fund types since the budget was adopted back in June of twenty-twenty-one. And so before I begin, when you go through the budget review, you're going to see fairly minimal changes in revenues and expenditures, particularly in the general fund. However, I did want to take just a moment to just kind of talk a little bit about the climate that we're in right now with our, with our finances. And so attendance, we know, is, is what our state aid is based upon. And that's over fifty percent of the general fund revenues that come in. And so we've, we've had many discussions throughout this year of how attendance is looking. And it's pretty low compared to most years. So last year, the students weren't here. This year, they're in enrollment, but they're not coming to school. And so the first six weeks, our attendance was at about eighty-nine percent district-wide, when typically it's around about ninety-five, ninety-five and a half percent in the first six weeks. The second six weeks, we were at ninety-one percent attendance. Now, this is a challenge that is by no means unique to spring ISD. We just returned from the Tessa Midwinter Conference, and it was the hot topic about attendance and how it impacts funding and all of that. So TEA does currently have two mechanisms that are intended to assist districts to offset some of that potential loss of revenue related to attendance. One is a waiver where we would look at previous year's attendance and compare it to current year attendance, and, and we may get an offset there. And the other is with reducing the amount of minutes that are required. But again, it's based upon looking back pre-pandemic and compared to now. The thing is, is that both of those mechanisms make an assumption that attendance will improve from first six weeks through the second semester, right? And so what we've recognized is that that's not happening. We came back into the second semester with the Omicron variant, and we continue to see low attendance. So this is a topic that is very well-known to TEA. And they've taken the information from the districts about the low attendance rate, and they're taking that into consideration. So we anticipate that we'll hear something, not exactly sure what, but we're, we will hear something related to how that will be handled as we finish out the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. One thing that we do know for sure is that the term that we talked a lot about last year, which was the Hold Harmless, that provision, the way it was originally in law, is not an option for this year. So we'll have to talk, we'll, we'll have to talk more once we know more from TEA as far as what those options will be for school districts. So I wanted to make sure to put that on our radar as we start moving into the budget discussions for twenty-two, twenty-three and just continuing to weather the storm that is COVID- nineteen that is continuously ongoing.
Do we know what percentage of our students that are absent is due to COVID?
That's a great question. And so we just recently, because it's now required, began tracking COVID. And so it could be they're out because they're ill, they're out because of exposure, or they're out due to fear of COVID. And so I don't have that data, but we are tracking it. And so we should be able to provide that, the answer to that question fairly soon.
Ms. Westbrook, when you were at Tessa Midwinter, do, do the charter schools show up at Tessa Midwinter?
Yes, sir. There are some charter schools that attend as well.
Was it a hot topic for them as well, or is it, it just the ISDs, they're having an issue with attendance?
I don't specifically recall the charter school speaking up. I know, not saying that it's not an issue for them. I just remember those that I was surrounded, and I'm sure most of us were school districts. Okay, so that wasn't actually the presentation. That was just the opening remark. So if you'll turn with me to page ninety-three with the second budget review. So we'll go through each fund type and just talk about the changes in revenues and expenditures, and then the changes to the staffing allocations. And so on page ninety-three for general fund, the increase in revenues is two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars. And that's largely made up of a supplement that we received for the special education program that was a part of the eighty-seven Texas Legislative Session. And so those funds are brought into the district and given directly over to special ed so that they can use those expenditures for the program. On the expenditure side, there's an increase of seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. And so the first item that you see there is an increase of three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars for some improvements to spring high school as a part of our, of response to our safety program over at spring high school. And then you see the expenditure offset for the special education supplement that we received. The next large item is an increase to our human resources budget for targeted recruitment efforts. So they, we've had lots of discussions about the crises that we're having right now with teacher vacancies. And so they've put together a comprehensive program for recruiting. And so some additional funds were provided to them to help with those, those efforts. The next item, I think, bears mentioning as well, even though it's not a, a super-large amount. And that is funds that were provided to our campuses to help with staff morale. We had a think session with them at our, I believe it was the November board meeting, our principal meeting. And so we asked for feedback of how can administration help with some of the problems that they're having on campuses? And they said things like, if we could just buy snacks. You know, it's sometimes it's the little things that teachers really just want to know that they're appreciated. And maybe they can't run out to grab a snack. So it's those little things. So we came up with an allocation and we provided each campus with enough to provide at least one meal for their, their staff. Or, or they can split it up and do those little things like we talked about for snacks and things like that. So they were excited. And so you may see some things that they're doing to help just let their teachers know they're appreciated. So we took that feedback and, and that's what, what you see here. So on the Town Nutrition Fund, no changes to revenues or expenditures on, on this review. Then in the Debt Service Fund, we have other financing sources of four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand and then an increase to appropriations of just under one-point-five million. And both changes are related to our tax refunding that we did for the twenty-twenty-one A series, which means that's our second refunding in this, this fiscal year. So, and we brought that to the board early on. We take advantage when the, the interest rate market allows us to. So ultimately, we end up with some savings in debt service as a result. On the special revenue side, there's an increase of seventy-two-point-nine in both revenues and expenditures. And that's related to the T-Class Grant and, and booking that grant for the district, as well as the increase to S R three. So if you recall, when S R three was first brought about, we only received the first two-thirds of those funds. And so we had to go back in November and apply for the remaining one-third. And so those funds came in on this budget review as well. Capital projects are, yes, capital projects funds, we had a very small increase of fifteen hundred dollars. And that's just balancing out our budget and, and planning for the small amount of interest income that we'll have. And then on the staffing allocations, we had a net increase of twenty-one-point-five positions, two of which were administrative, eleven were professional, seven-point-five paraprofessional, and then one was classified. And so the majority of those changes are related to changes in enrollment that have happened since the last budget review. And so a good example is Marshall Elementary. We're seeing some, a good increase in enrollment at Marshall Elementary. And so we had to add a counseling position, additional assistant principal. So it's good to have discussions about enrollment going up. And so there's lots of more information that's included here, but it's all the details behind the numbers that I just shared with you all. And so, of course, if there's any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the second budget review of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the second budget review of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second the motion.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve the second budget review for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Are there any discussions or questions from Ms. Westbrook? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. All right. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one dot zero-seven-two, dot zero-seven-four, and dot zero-seven-six. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in our closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. And the time is now ten-thirteen. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now eleven-fifty-five PM. We have no additional items to discuss from the closed session. And so entertain the motions adjourned.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee McDaniel that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous. The meeting is now adjourned at eleven-fifty-six PM. Thank you.